One.
Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, March 11th, 2021, meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz, the Chair of the School Committee. Meeting is being held as a Zoom meeting online pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law, which was actually issued on March 12th, 2020. So almost a year, a year tomorrow that that order was issued. This meeting is being audio and video recorded, and it is also being broadcast on North Hampton Open Media. I would ask people to please keep themselves muted and preferably when we're in the school committee portions of the meeting, the non-public comment, turning your video screen off as well. Just because it makes it easier to consolidate all the school committee members who are who are in the meeting and particularly for people watching on North Hampton Open Media, they can see the school committee members. So, so we have a very full agenda this evening. And we have some important administrative business that will happen at the beginning of the meeting, namely our interviews with business administrator candidates. So we will not be doing public comment right at the beginning of the meeting. We'll actually be doing it a little bit later in the meeting after we finish that those duties. And so we're going to try to work through this agenda as swiftly as we can so that we can get all of these items in and get to public comment. So let's begin by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee.
Member Busansky.
Present.
Member Fallon.
Present.
Member Seraphy Cox. Member Condon.
Present.
Member Levy.
Present.
Member Kaufman.
Present.
Member Goldman.
Present.
Member Voss.
Present.
Member Gold.
Present.
And Mayor Narcoitz.
Present.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Okay, so first item on tonight's agenda is announcements. Are there any announcements from members of the school committee? If you could maybe do a raise hands or Member Kaufman, physical hand raise.
Yeah, I was looking for, yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking for my hand raise.
Her reactions if you're for the new, the new update to the software, it's actually under the reactions button along the bottom, they took it out.
Yeah.
So anyway, just for future reference.
I don't see a hand raised, I see a thumbs up, a heart and all those other things, but no problem. Anyway. Thank you. I wanted to give my colleagues a really fast update on our retreats. So we have two retreats scheduled. The first one is April 29th, and that one will be on our organizational structure and what we can do to potentially enhance our meetings. What I've done with that is talk with our MASC Regional Representative Liz Lefon. I've interacted with her a few times. She feels right on top of this. She has a lot of experience, but also she is going to call in some of her contemporaries. And I think that's going to go well. So just to formalize that, that will occur on April 29th from seven to nine. Place, location to be determined. I would assume that's likely to be remote, but we haven't decided that yet. I also wanted to talk just real briefly about the second retreat. This is one that I've been interacting and got a lot of support from Member Levy as well in working with CES. This was a retreat that we talked about on equity and Abar training. And I think what we came to the conclusion after two conversations is that it would be beneficial to work with CES, given that CES is already running a year-long or potentially longer than a year-long workshop with the rest of our staff. So I set up a conversation that we had with Sapphire DeJong and her colleague at CES, and I was very impressed with the ideas that we shared, both in terms of learning more so about what is happening in the district and making sure that we can support the efforts currently underway. But also do our own sort of self-reflection and self-efforts towards where we stand on these issues and where we can go further with them. So that will happen on June 17th again at a place to be determined. One thing that we all agreed on is that one workshop is not going to be enough, if you will. But that longer than two hours would be beneficial. So what I wanted to do is toss out the idea for that evening. We don't really have a required amount of time, so I wanted to see if that was okay, that we meet from 6:30 until 9:30 on Thursday, June 17th. That would give us an hour more than the other one. And I think rather than slowing up tonight's meeting, if you can just please let me know if you can't make it before next Monday would be excellent. If one person can't make it or two can't make it, that's one thing, but I think the date is set. So if you hopefully we can make it for those three hours and hopefully maybe by the 17th, we can do this in person to be determined. Before the mid two, before the two retreats, I will reach out or I will have our facilitators reach out to everybody to ask for more feedback in terms of what people are looking for. But again, I didn't want to do that tonight. I just wanted to solidify the two dates and let you know that I would like to have these second one for three hours. So thank you.
Member Seraphy Cox, you have your hand up next.
I just wanted the clerk to be aware that I was present since I came in in the middle of the roll call.
I did see when you raised your hand, so I had you have you marked down as present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more announcements from members of the school committee? Hearing none, let's move on to the recommended actions of and the consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes of four sets of minutes of school committee meetings, December 10th, 2020. And then we have three from back in 2018, May 10th, June 14th, and July 10th. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda meeting minutes?
Is there a second?
Okay.
And Mayor, is it possible to withdraw the or remove the December 10th minutes from that?
Sure. So there's been a member request that the December 10th minutes be removed. Any other requests? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the role on the motion for the consent agenda. You're muted, Annie.
Sorry about that. Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
And Member Busansky.
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so we now turn to a hopefully brief discussion of the December 10th, 2020 minutes or not. Member Gold.
Yeah, rather than taking up time now, is it if everyone would be okay with that, I'd love to just email Annie with things just to have put into it and have us discuss it at our next school committee meeting.
So you'd like to basically move to postpone consideration until our next school committee meeting. Okay.
Yes.
So there's been a motion made. Is there a second to postpone consideration till our next meeting?
Second.
Okay, Member Busansky, your hand is raised.
That's fine, I'm going to lower my hand.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to postpone consideration until our next meeting of the December 10th minutes. It'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
This is where I
Uh, Member Kaufman.
Yes. Sorry, yes.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, Member Goldman. I think you said yes, but you're muted, so, okay. Uh, Member Voss.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
And Member Fallon.
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so that item is postponed until our next meeting. We'll now move to several budget transfers that are on the agendas tonight. We have three student, one to student services for 52,000, 650, one to student services for 20,000, 583. And then a series of transfers relative to contract lane changes, non-rep contractual increases, staffing changes from anticipated budget reductions, and special ed reorganization totaling 264 of 7. I would entertain a motion either individually or as a group, and we can hear from Kami on any questions people have on them.
Motion to approve the budget transfers.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Kami, do you want to just give us a quick overview of these just for for the record here, for the public record?
For student services had submitted two of the transfers for translations. Is really going from the district account to the high school account for the 52,000. It's just we need to categorize it by where the money is actually being spent. And also the same thing with tuitions is just a category categorization of the tuition that we're paying for those two amounts. And the other items are normally transfers that I would do throughout the course of the year, and I'm a little bit behind. So I caught up a little bit on all the things that have come through. The contract lane changes are done twice a year, September and February. We may see a few more come through on February. The non-rep contractual increases are something that happened in July and catching up with those budgets. The staffing changes at JFK were as part of the fiscal 21 budget. We had identified that a computer teacher would be eliminated, and that's not exactly what happened with the change in principal. And what we ended up doing was a number of retirements happened, so that teacher positions changed a little bit from the actual reduction that was brought forward to begin with. And the last one is a special ed reorganization, which the school committee had already gone through. It's just to formalize actually doing the transfers in the accounts right now.
Okay, so this is just, these are funds that are just being moved within the FY 2021 budget, not new funds, but just funds that are being reallocated throughout the budget. Okay, are there any questions for Business Administrator Lamica about these transfers? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Sorry, yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
And Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so the motion is adopted and those transfers are approved. Next, we'll move to the approval of MIAA middle school waivers for girls' basketball, softball, boys' tennis, and girls' tennis. And I'm not sure who's speaking to this. Dr. Provost?
We have Lauren McFarland here tonight.
So our athletic director Lauren McFarland is here and can give us a quick overview of what this is before we vote on it. Lauren?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you for having me here this evening. This is a request to use eighth graders to help fill our sports programs for the ones that were listed above. They will all be on the lowest level of each team, so just to keep our JV and freshman level programs up and running, and then also just building a little continuity between the middle school and the high school sports as well. And so I can go into more detail of how many we're requesting for each sport, if you would like that. It's pretty minimal. It's just to make sure that our JV squad is is filled and ready to go to play games.
And so this requires a waiver under MIAA rules to allow a student who's in middle school to play at a JV or varsity level sport.
Correct. So the the MIAA has approved our request already, and the PVIAC has approved our request. So the the next step is for the school committee to approve.
Unless there are members who, oh, Member Voss. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Member Fallon had her hand up first, but it's a paler hand, so I couldn't spot it. Sorry.
Thanks. I just had a quick question about, do those students then have to also pay athletic fees and go through the same training process?
Correct. Yes.
Member Voss.
I just wanted to know, I'm sure you're going to make sure eighth graders know this is an opportunity to do, because I don't think we have this all that often. And the other question is, are they going to be trying out? Or are we going to make space for people who want to do it?
We need them, so there's definitely space. So the requests for tennis, I mean, last year we only had eight students registered in general, so if we want to have two squads, we need them. So that will be just a process that I reach out to the JFK principal, just to make sure that it gets announced and we can start to recruit for those positions. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So we need them.
Okay.
Hey, I have a, I have a question, but like Lonnie, Member Kaufman, I don't have that blue option, so.
No problem, Member Gold.
Is there just, are there cost implications for us of transporting students from the middle school to the high school or anything like that? Is there anything that we have to?
The the expectation is that they will get themselves to practice just like high school students do.
Okay, Member Seraphy Cox.
I'm just a motion to approve the MIA waiver.
Is there a second on that? Okay, seconded. I heard a couple seconds. So any further discussion? Okay. I'll even dispense with the, you know, do they need a fifth, did they get a fifth year of eligibility under NCA rules joke? So let's go ahead and call the motion, please. Call the roll.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Lauren, for being with us this evening, and and good luck to those new eighth grade students who'll be joining those teams. Okay, it is 7:05, and our agenda says at 7:05, we will begin reports and recommendations. So we will now turn to our student representatives, Tally Sarlin and Megan O'Connor, who will give us this evening's student representative report. So Tally and Megan, okay, I will ask you to unmute, and I will ask Megan to unmute.
Hi, everybody. In case you don't know us, we're the Student Union High School Representatives. My name is Tally.
And I'm Megan, and we're just here to give you a quick update on the high school and the student union. So since we spoke at the last school committee meeting, hybrid learning has started at the high school. So some kids are in school and some are at home learning virtually. And for some kids, this was actually their first time in the school, which was very exciting for all the new students. It was certainly a challenge at first to adjust to a different way of learning while keeping everyone engaged, but our teachers have been doing a great job of making this new system as fair and equitable as possible and keeping the virtual learners engaged, which was a worry for some of the people who opted out of in-person learning. Additionally, fall two sports have started. Football and other sports that were deemed unsafe to play in the fall were postponed until March in hopes that it would be safe for them to play later in the year, and a recent announcement stated that the fall two sports at NHS would begin shortly. Another example of students finding ways to have fun and connect virtually is the trivia nights that have been hosted by class officers. The most recent one was actually organized by both NHS class officers and some class officers from Hampshire Regional to have a friendly interschool competition with trivia. We are also very happy to say that the NHS teams won the trivia night, and we're just very grateful to the people who've been thinking of creative ways to provide entertainment.
A lot of developments have also been made in the student union. Our lending library received a lot of donations thanks to the generosity of community members, and we can't wait for students to start taking advantage of this new resource. Speaking of resources, the student union dedicates a certain amount of money to give grants to student projects or student-run organizations. Grants have been open for a few weeks. So far, no student has taken advantage of this, but we're working hard to spread the word about this opportunity, even though spreading the word is a little harder when we don't get to see each other in person every day. The members working on the peer mentoring program and the mental health day have been working with the administration and receiving teacher input on how to successfully implement these programs. We are excited to say that we are trying out the first mental health day sometime in late March. We will take notes and input on how that goes to inform our decision about the next mental health day, which we hope to have in May. There has recently been a lot of talk about the embedded honors program at the high school, so the student union has formed a subcommittee that hopes to work with the administration to make the embedded honors program as beneficial as possible to all students. The NHS Anti-Racial Bias Subcommittee has been having meetings with the English Department at NHS to talk about ways to increase the diversity in the curriculum. In the light of recent events at JFK, our subcommittee and the entire union has had our eyes open to the fact that our community is not as accepting, equitable, and safe as we would like it to be. So we have been brainstorming further ways to make our school, school community intentionally anti-racist. Throughout the brainstorming process, we're hoping to get more students, student input specifically from students of color on the ways we can go about achieving this goal. I would also like to remind everyone that our emails, DMs, and meetings, which are on the first and third Thursday of each month from 6:30 to 8:00 are open to the public, and we so helpful peers and community members to voice their opinions. Thank you all for listening. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions from members of the school committee for our student representatives. As you may have heard at the beginning, we have a super busy meeting this evening, so it sounds like we don't have questions, but we really appreciate your report, and thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you both. Okay, so we'll now move on to a, any reports from our Rules and Policy Committee? Are there any reports from the Chair of Rules and Policy?
No, only that our next meeting is scheduled for next Thursday at 7:00 PM.
Okay, any updates from the Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
Just to announce, our next meeting is also been scheduled for April, April 1st at 3:30 PM.
Okay, updates from Budget and Property Committee?
No updates at this time, thank you.
Thank you. So let's now move to the School Business Administrator's report and Personnel Report from Business Administrator Kami Lamica.
In the evening packet, I did not put my regular business monthly report that I usually do since we having the budget presentation tonight, so I concentrated my focus on that. But I do have the personnel report, which we had one new hire, one separation, and one transfer during February. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will turn to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Provost?
Thank you very much. Last Friday, the Board of Education voted to give Commissioner Riley the authority to determine when hybrid and remote models would no longer count towards meeting the required student learning time hours. We began working immediately on Monday to plan the logistics of a potential return to fully in-person learning for elementary students beginning April 5th. On Tuesday, the Commissioner confirmed that timeline, announcing that elementary schools must transition to full-time in-person instruction five days a week effective Monday, April 5th, 2021. And that middle schools must begin full-time in-person instruction five days a week effective Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. There will be a date, a deadline for high schools announced at a later time. Our first priority was to assist staff with the process of vaccination. Although state vaccine registration for educators officially began today, CVS started offering appointments last Wednesday. The process was frustrating, but by the weekend, we were starting to figure out the system. By Monday, a four-page group sourced Google Doc with educators COVID hacks was circulating. I'm happy to report that many of our staff are now in the process of being immunized. I received my first shot on Tuesday. I want to share that information for two reasons. I share it so you know the system works, you are able to get an appointment. And also, I wanted to share it so that you knew that the vax, that I believe the vaccine is safe and effective, and would encourage anyone who's interested in getting the vaccine to do so. To further expedite the process of educator vaccination, the Baker-Polito Administration has designated Saturday, March 27th, Saturday, April 3rd, Saturday, April 10th, and Sunday, April 11th, as educator vaccination days at the state's seven vaccination sites. I encourage all school employees wishing to receive a vaccine to take advantage of one of these opportunities if you've not already obtained a vaccination appointment, or if you have an appointment at a later date but would like to receive the vaccine sooner. The Commissioner's decision will have a marked impact on classroom arrangements and transportation practices. We currently have students' desks placed six feet apart. Most classrooms have 10 to 12 desks. When fully in-person learning resumes at the elementary level, we would expect 15 to 20 desks per classroom, depending on the number of families that wish to continue to keep their children home. We will continue to honor the wishes of parents who wish to keep their children at home by transferring them to the district-wide remote classrooms, but that will mean another transition for students and may cause the size of the remote classrooms to swell. As we continue to implement disease mitigation practices, masking and frequent hat hand washing will continue to be a staple of the school day. We will also continue to avoid practices such as circle time and keep our classrooms free of items such as carpets and reading nooks that tend to bring students together in close proximity to each other. We're also ordering approximately 20 tents to encourage classes to meet outside where the risk of disease transmission is lower. At the current time, we only allow one student or siblings from the same household to sit on each seat on the buses. With the constraints, some of our buses are already at full capacity. In order to implement fully in-person instruction for elementary students, we will need to adopt the state's updated guidance for school transportation. The February twenty twenty-one guidance lifts all capacity restrictions on social distancing for elementary students on buses. It also lifts restrictions for middle school students on buses in non-high incidence communities such as Northampton. With this in mind, I would encourage families to take advantage of our walking school buses and would ask caregivers to consider transporting their own children if they can to reduce the density of students seating on buses. Earlier, I asked the school committee to limit school transportation to the minimum statutory requirement for busing. This was done in order to allow for social distancing on the buses. Since the new requirements will force us to abandon social distancing on buses, the rationale for limiting transportation no longer exists. At the next meeting, I will be recommending the resumption of transportation services for students in grades seven through twelve, once their grades join the fully in-person.
Think you muted yourself, Superintendent.
I don't know how that happened, so I'm back. Um, so let me go back to, at our next meeting, I will be recommending the resumption of transportation services for students in grades seven through twelve, once their grades join the fully in-person model. To save some capacity, I would still recommend starting transportation at two miles from the school and charging a prorated rate of fifty-five dollars for the remainder of the school year. Students eligible for free or reduced lunch would not be charged for a bus pass. As the new requirements take effect, caregivers will have the opportunity to choose their have, to have their children attend fully in-person or fully remote learning. Hybrid learning will no longer be an option. Family surveys will be distributed in the very near future so that we can redistribute materials, supplies, and personnel to accommodate fully in-person learners. It's important to note that the remote learning option may look different than the model offered prior to the implementation of the new requirements. I would anticipate that class sizes may increase in the elementary district remote classrooms because some families have opted to keep their child, child, um, in the hybrid model, but only allowed them to participate in the remote portion of that model. This will not be possible after April fifth because there will be no more hybrid classes at the elementary level. If elementary families wish to have their children remain remote, they will have to transfer to one of the district remote classes, um, at the student's grade level. At the middle school, I anticipate the opposite effect. With the size of remote classes shrinking as more students join the fully in-person model, the impact of the transition to in-person learning will arguably be greatest at the high school level. If the committee accepts the recommendation to restore transportation for grades seven through twelve, the high school's start time will need to go back to seven thirty. That's for both students in fully remote and in fully in-person. And students choosing to stay in the remote model will lose a day and a half of instruction per week because their teachers will be needed for in-person instruction on Mondays and Wednesdays, which are currently days that are dedicated to remote instruction. As happened in each stage of the process, we will, the support we are able to provide will depend on the number of students choosing to participate in in-person or remote learning. And it has happened at each stage of the process. I anticipate caregivers saying that it's hard to choose without knowing more. So let me try to summarize what can be said at this point. At the elementary level, fully in-person learning would be very similar to the current model. Only students would have five days of in-person instruction instead of two. All students wishing to remain remote would be enrolled in the district-wide remote class and would not be able to stay with their current teacher. Similarly, at the middle school, we would try to maintain as much of the in-person structures as we have established for the hybrid model as is possible, while we extend the number of in-person days from two to five. We think the demand for remote classes will shrink and we may need to close some remote sections if teachers are needed for in-person instruction. As I said before, the changes will be most dramatic at the high school. Instead of having one day a week of in-person instruction, students would have five days a week. The increase of in-person learning services will require a significant reduction in remote learning instruction. So some have asked about requesting a potential waiver from the new requirements. I do not encourage that for our district. The state has explained the waiver process as one that is only intended for a small number of districts and is only designed to provide a brief delay before fully in-person instruction. In its explanatory materials, the state has made it explicit that a local decision to maintain social distancing of greater than three feet will not be considered a valid reason to grant a waiver. The state also does not anticipate granting waivers even for high community prevalence of COVID nineteen. And I'll say more, um, part of the waiver process involves, um, just, um, deploying what they're calling the state facilities team to the district. And what that facilities team will do is go through the schools and try to place student desks with three-foot spacing to determine whether or not the, the school can in fact fit all of its students with three feet. We believe we can do that. We believe we don't need the state to place students in our, to place desks in our classroom in order to tell us we can do that. And I don't want to go through that process only to have them say you don't need a waiver because you can fit all these desks here with three-foot distancing. Transitioning to a new learning mode for the final months of the school year will not be simple or easy. However, our students and staff have adjusted to so many changes over the course of the past year. I know they can make this change too. There will be bumps in the road for sure, but I know we will end the year on a high note and return in the fall fully prepared to implement in-person learning in the post-COVID era. Later tonight, you'll receive the FY twenty-two budget books. As I write in my annual budget message this year, quote, "Erasing the legacy of pandemic-related opportunity gaps will require us to direct additional resources to students who have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic and to sustain those investments over time," close quote. As you recall from our last meeting, we are proposing to spend over seven hundred thousand dollars on equity-focused initiatives to address the learning loss of our most vulnerable learners. Based on feedback we received at that meeting, we have added more than an additional hundred thousand dollars for summer programming at the high school, clinical services at the high school and middle school, and the late bus. Of course, the most obvious and powerful intervention to address learning loss is to resume and sustain fully in-person learning. And that will require continued spending on disease mitigation measures such as PPE, increased medical staffing, tents, et cetera. Adding these costs to the total recovery package for next year brings the amount spent on COVID recovery in the budget books you'll receive later this evening to more than one and a half million for FY twenty-two. So I know we have a lot on our agenda tonight and I know that I'm already over time, so I would just end my report there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Provost. Uh, thank you very much for your report. And obviously, we'll be waiting to hear more details as they are developed. We now have, we don't have old business on our agenda, but we do have, um, important new business, which is interviews by the full school committee of three candidates for school business administrator. These are candidates that were brought forward, um, by an ad hoc screening committee that had been formed, um, by Dr. Provost, um, and the school committee to advise us on this very important hire. And so tonight, we're going to meet with, um, three, those three candidates. Um, we've allotted thirty minutes for each candidate. And we will, um, begin this evening, um, by welcoming, uh, I'm sorry, Dr. Provost, I just want to turn off this, I have the spotlight on you, I want to turn that off. And by welcoming Courtney Laborious, who's joining us this evening. Courtney, are you in the meeting?
I am, yes, I'm there. Thank you.
Oh, excellent. Great. Thank you so much. Um, welcome. Um, and we have, um, we have a series of questions this evening. We are going to have, um, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six questions that will be asked by various members of the school committee. And, uh, so I'll actually kick off the questioning by inviting you to make, um, an opening statement, including your reasons for wanting to join the Northampton Public Schools.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you so much, Mayor Narcoitz. Did I pronounce that correctly? Okay, and thank you, Dr. Provost and school committee, as well as members of the community for having me here tonight. It's an honor to speak with you about this opportunity. Um, and so, uh, I am a municipal finance and operations manager with over fourteen years of progressive responsibility. I started as an analyst with, um, New York City Office of Management and Budget. And, um, I'll talk to you about a little bit about my experience, but most recently, I am the Business and Operations Manager, so we call it the Director of Finance and Operations um, in the Danbury Public School System. So going through a lot of the similar challenges that Dr. Provost was mentioning, um, with return to school also, uh, on April fifth as well, so and in the midst of a budget cycle as well. Um, so I'm excited to talk to you about that opportunity. Um, I've worked with a diverse, um, group of teams. Over the course, ten years of my career, I've had the opportunity to have a lot of great mentors. Um, and I looked, I went from New York City back to Connecticut to return to home. Um, I loved my time in the city, um, but I grew up in Enfield, Connecticut, and my stomping grounds was Northampton. That's where I spent, um, you know, every part of my young, uh, adulthood or actually like teenage years was in Northampton, um, uh, Fitzwillies and at the, at the theater. And, um, just, it was a great opportunity for me, um, to, when I saw the posting, I was very excited because I'm looking to return closer to home. And so just, I wanted to thank you for being here and I look forward to talking a little bit more about my experience and how I might give it to our community.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's great to have you. Um, the, the first question, uh, the next question rather, is going to come from Member Fallon. Member Fallon?
Thanks. Hi and welcome. Um, so my question was, um, the Northampton School Committee, our members only serve two-year terms and, and we do have, um, sometimes frequent turnover. And often, our school committee members have little or no background in school finance. Yet one of our primary responsibilities is to review and approve and oversee an annual budget of over thirty million dollars. How would you describe your role in supporting them in that work?
Oh, that's great. A really great question. Thank you. So I, I've had, um, a lot of experience over my career. Like I've developed, um, opportunities to work with people at all different levels. And I myself came from an anthropology background. Um, so although I became a numbers person, I, I wasn't always a numbers person. So I like to, um, present information in ways that, um, are really digestible and easy for people to understand. That takes a lot of behind-the-scenes work. I really, you know, am fond of looking at Dr. Provost's presentations because I know how much work goes into making the information accessible and digestible. And I, I do appreciate the budget presentations.
I don't like this place when it's a start.
Sorry, yeah, this happens sometimes. But, um, so, uh, yeah, the, I, I'm fortunate.
Way too much.
Hold on for just a minute. Okay, so I'm back off on, uh, a mute. So, um, I currently work with a board that has a diversity of members. I'm really fortunate in that, um, my fiscal, my, um, committee leadership, it has been there for, I think, thirty or forty years with the same board. Now, that's not something that you normally see. Um, and so I, I'm used to working with boards that have, um, I'm sorry, I'm just going to try to get it back on the view so I can see you, Ms. Fallon, um, that I, I'm used to working with boards at different levels of experience. I think the relationship is what's so important. So I would get to know you and your priorities, um, as it relates to Dr. Provost and the, and the, um, the team at Northampton Schools priorities. But I'm, I'm really comfortable with presenting information in a way that's digestible and adapting um, to the needs of the committee because you represent the public and you're the ones that need to understand the information in order for us to together accomplish the mission of serving the kids, um, with our mission of equity and access to education for, for all kids appropriately. So, um, I'm sorry, just to be more, more concise, I would put together a presentation, get your feedback and understand what works for you to be able to communicate and feel good about the decisions that you're making.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yeah.
So the next question will come from our Vice Chair, Member Kaufman. Member Kaufman?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for joining us. And obviously, thank you for your interest in working for the Northampton Public Schools. Sure. Um, so we're in the middle of our FY twenty-two budget process now, uh, which is tricky this year due to the need to facilitate student social and emotional recovery in the midst of what is a very uncertain economy. So my question is, can you describe for us your experience during a financial downturn? And how you strategize the best use of all available funds for a multiple-year duration in order to make your financial recommendations to both the Superintendent and to the school committee?
Absolutely. Um, I, I think I've always been in a place where we've been in challenging financial times. I've been working for public institutions for about fourteen years. And I started with New York City, um, when we were in an economic downturn. And we called it the Program to Eliminate the Gap. So that's the mayor's term for, um, make finding efficiencies in the budget so we don't have to reduce critical services. Um, but we've had to, so I see my role and the thing that I really love about working with a good leader like, um, Dr. Provost, from what I understand, and the people I've been able to work with in the past, as, um, I, I, I say scraping the bear, not scraping the barrel, but like looking everywhere I possibly can for efficiencies with the information that I have. So just one example is, um, we, we had, I work for Administration for Children's Services. I was an Executive Director of Finance there. And we deployed, um, handheld devices for our child welfare workers in the field. And that freed up desk space and time for them to go back to the office and have to record field notes. And it was a bit of an investment, but it saved us money after about six months. And then in the long run, um, on the time the staff had, and it was also more accurate reporting because they were able to do the reporting in the field. Right now, um, you know, I'm in the same position as you are with the school committee and with, um, the, um, administration that's on the education side. We have a lot of funds. Danbury is a big school district, so we were the, we're the recipient of a, a large amount of that ESAR funding. Um, and also the new, um, pandemic relief package. And we have to be very mindful about building something that's not going to leave us a long-term risk, just like you're looking at now. So, um, you know, in budget, so investing in one-time, um, opportunities that will have long-lasting impact for the district. One of the priorities we identified was a, access to technology. I know from watching one of your board meetings before, you had grappled with, you know, one-to-one devices, things like that before, prior to, you know, the pandemic. But we're looking at really prudently investing in things that won't leave us, um, challenged in, in three years when that, um, funding potentially goes away, but build some strong infrastructure that can sustain us. So, for example, we're purchasing some products in the social, emotional, um, realm that will, uh, allow us to do a train-the-trainer model for students, for teachers and, and staff. That doesn't have an ongoing maintenance cost so that if the funding is no longer there, we won't be left with a cliff. Um, we're also prudently sort of investing in staffing, like for student support specialists and interventionists to work with students in after-school programs, um, on a time-limited basis and, um, supporting a team so that if that funding goes away, you know, um, we, we won't be left, you know, with a risk for the local community. As well as some facility and one-time expenditure type, um, in, investments that we can utilize to make, um, the, the classroom infrastructure more safe. You know, we have a lot of really old buildings, so the HVAC is, um, of interest to my community. And so we're making some investments in HVAC upgrades. For example, I heard, um, Dr. Provost talk about busing. Yes, we're busing and extending the summer school opportunities for this summer for kids. Where we normally have kids pay for high school that aren't part of a rubric of needing academic support, we're allowing those kids to come in and not have to pay so that we can expand the access to summer school this summer and things like that. So it's investments in those, um, you know, directly, I, um, learning loss that's directly related to the pandemic. So that's, that's for today, but I mean, I, I pretty much everywhere I've been, I've had to do that. So one last example is, um, at Hunter College, I was the Executive Director of Finance there. And I worked arm-in-arm with the Provost and the President of the college. Basically, because, um, we noticed through gathering some data that, um, students were under-enrolled in some of the courses. And we realized that was because sometimes we would put out like ten different, um, uh, sections of the same course rather than rolling out courses as they enrolled. So we'd fill up a section and then we'd be quick enough to open another section, you know, and working with the Pro. I mean, that's a simple fix, but working with the Provost, but you know, and the data department and the finance department, that's something we came up with. And then one last one, we also, like, for example, we paid, um, adjuncts like triple, you know, for, for, um, taking on classes that were bigger than, than fifty. we paid adjuncts like triple, you know, for taking on classes that were bigger than fifty. And really, we had to look at workload because sometimes the classes don't take much more work when it's like a Scantron. But we could give them a greater, or we scaled it. So if you have fifty to seventy-five students, you've got X amount of a stipend, or seventy-five to a hundred. You know, we tailored it a little bit more and we saved millions because like the college was challenged financially also, you know, public institution as well. So I really like that. That's, yeah, so that's the things I like to do in my job.
Thank you for your response. Appreciate it.
Yes, I'm sorry it was so long-winded. I apologize.
So the next question will come to you from Member Levy. Member Levy?
Thanks. Hi, Courtney. Thanks so much for your responses so far. And thanks for your written statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm hoping you can talk for a little bit about what you see as the role diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism play in the business administrator position? And what areas do you think you would need to develop in order to bring that lens to the role?
I'm really, really glad for that question. And I'm glad to be in the district that's asking that question as part of the interview process. I think that we're at just this amazing moment in history where, thank God, everybody's talking about it and it's at the forefront of the resources that we deploy. And we're forced to examine things from that lens so that we really question our, you know, internal biases and really look at things honestly. So I welcome the opportunity. It's a really very, very important part of a responsibility for a leader. And I'm glad that it's where I am now at Danbury. It's part of everything with our strategic focus. We're a very diverse district. And so, you know, from hiring, you know, it's incorporated into our lens when we hire, when we allocate resources, we look from a lens of diversity and equity. And as an arm of that cabinet team, I would uphold those principles. And I would want to join a group that is also working at things from a lens of diversity and equity. Specifically, you know, at Hunter College, in our procurement, we had a threshold that we were supposed to meet and we met and far exceeded MWBE. So priorities for procurement, so supporting businesses that are minority women, enterprise-owned. And so having metrics, measuring it, and see how you're doing against that. As a leader, you know, being open to my whole team and a diverse team and being supportive of openness and communication and recognizing the value of having that lens. I hope that that answers the question. I feel like I'm missing some pieces, but I apologize.
Yeah, there is a part two, which is just what's some of the development or areas that you would hope to grow in order to really be able to bring that lens to the work?
Oh, yeah. So we've had training with a woman from NYU. Her name is escaping me now, as part of my Danbury Coalition. So we do regular community meetings on diversity and equity. And that, for me, has helped my professional development. There's always resources that they provide and follow-up workshops that we attend as well. But we do have that, it's like a bi-weekly check-in with the community specifically focused on that. And it's a person that's really well-known. And I apologize if her name is escaping me, but she's out of New York University and leads this group work with us, you know, regularly where we check in on community issues or school issues that we're having her professional help with us to unpack and talk about as a community. And I would hope that that would be something that we'd be able to maybe do in Northampton as well. Or there's maybe already a forum of that type.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I have the next question. And in Massachusetts, mayors are typically members of school committees or either the Chair or a member. And part of that reason is because we provide a link to city government. And so my question would be, describe your working relationship with the city officials, the city finance officials, such as the Treasurer, the Accountant, or the Auditor's Office. And then describe any notable challenges or success stories you've had working with the municipal side of the team.
Well, I love that because it gives me a chance to talk finance with other finance professionals. So it's kind of fun sometimes to get down and be able to discuss a problem and have someone that can help just be a having board. It's really, really important for me in my current role and all the roles that I've had to be very, you know, close cooperatively with the city. So right now, you know, I talk to the Finance Director at the City of Danbury probably every other day, if not every day. Because, you know, we're lockstep in what we do and we're very transparent and have a great working relationship. I started out working for the Mayor's Office of the New York City Management, it's Mayor's Office of Management and Budget. And so I worked in direct support of the mayor. So what it is, it's an intermediary agency that works on behalf of the mayor but oversees an agency element. So we would help translate the mayor's agenda but also represent our agency to the mayor's experts in finance on behalf of that agency. I really loved that role because it let me see the whole picture. And it was a great training ground for me. I would just say, I guess one of the successes is, I was, my, there was an illness going around. And we prepare for the budget book much like you do. You know, when I was the Executive Director of Finance at Administration for Children's Services, it's a three-billion-dollar budget. It's kind of a lot. You know, it's a birth-to-five program, contracted childcare, as well as juvenile justice, I mean, juvenile detention and placement, as well as child welfare services. So it's a big budget. It's a lot of responsibility. And my team prepares the budget book. We spend about a month, you know, while we're still running operations, preparing the budget book. And I think I was about eight and a half months pregnant. And my Commissioner and Deputy Commissioner both fell ill at like four in the morning the day before we had to testify, you know. And it's a little bit different when you're preparing the budget book on behalf of someone as opposed to when you're presenting it. But I was proud because I was able to pivot real quickly, sit in front of the City Council, testify effectively on behalf of our budget. And, you know, we had a twenty-six-million-dollar child welfare initiative that got approved that was really important to us at the time. So I was proud of that. But that's from, you know, really rolling up my sleeves and being both an analyst as well as, you know, being sort of comfortable in front of council presenting the information. I think I really like being in the detail, but I also like taking that step back and doing the big picture as well. And so I was really proud of that because that was a little bit of a, you know, pivot moment. And it was really important to our agency and I was proud of what I was able to deliver.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. The final question we have for you this evening will come from back to Member Kaufman. Member Kaufman?
Yes, thanks again. So, yeah, this is our final question. And that is basically, what questions or final thoughts would you like to leave us with tonight before we end the conversation?
Oh, thank you so much. Well, first, I also just wanted to say, I didn't emphasize, but my favorite part of a job and anything intellectual, having intellectual curiosity and working on a team. So I really, really, really like developing a team. I want to always be able to say, if I walk away, I want my predecessor to be able to do my job. And I, you know, I'd like them to know each other's jobs and I really love the camaraderie of being on a team. And I think I've done that effectively. And when you, earlier, when you asked, the mayor asked what I was most proud of, I mentioned something that was like a personal accomplishment because I was thinking about the relationship to the Treasurer, the Accountant, and the mayor. But I actually really am most proud about something that someone said to me, one of my staff members, which was, you know, you pushed us. It was really hard what we had to do. This was a payroll implementation. But we knew that you would, you were there with us and that if anything that you asked us to do, you were going to do too. And I was most proud about hearing that because that's what I would want from a boss and I felt really good and that they felt happy and supported. And so I would just ask, is this the kind of environment, knowing what you know from being on the school committee and knowing what you know about the town, that would be that kind of environment for someone? And also, what are you looking for in a successful candidate that would be part of this team effectively? And you don't have to answer it necessarily. I just.
Well, I answered the question. Were you asking me or is it targeted towards somebody else or?
Well, for you, because you asked the question and then, and/or anybody else. But I would wonder, like, for you, like, working on the school community committee, what would be an effective partnership? And I guess that's one of the questions.
I can take a swing at that, Member Kaufman, if you want. If you'd like.
Why don't you? And then I'll follow up.
Sure, I just, I think that, I do think one of the, one of the key aspects, I think that Dr. Provost has done is built a really strong administrative leadership team of which the Finance Directors, the Business Administrators are a big part of. And I know that that's been, that's been critical for making, you know, major improvements in our district and dealing with challenging budgets and obviously dealing with the pandemic. So I think you'll find that there is a strong sense of team and a really strong team in place that you'd be joining. And it's, and from, at least from where I sit, it's a team that's very supportive of each other. And so that would just be my reflection on your question.
Oh, that's really helpful. Thank you, Mayor.
And I would certainly agree. I mean, it's a really, really tough position. And I'm glad you enjoy it because, you know, the demands are pretty vast. But we, I think we enjoy clarity in numbers and we've gotten that from our current and past business managers. We do, we are responsible for that. And I don't think we want headaches, if you will. But there are, these are tough times and somebody that can help us understand the data and the numbers and the decisions behind that is always important. And somebody who also wants to be active in some of the leadership team decisions is something I value as well. And I've noticed that in past positions that people who don't just isolate themselves too much, they know what they need to do, but they become an integral part of our superintendent's team is also, for me personally, an important piece. But I don't think we have the time. I think everybody would probably answer differently. But between Mayor and Arquits and myself, hopefully that's helpful.
That's very helpful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you so much again for joining us this evening, Courtney. And we appreciate it. And obviously, I'll, I think I'll be putting you in the waiting room at this point. And I think we'll be, I think that is going to be the protocol. Is that correct, Dr. Provost?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll ask, I'll ask Annie to put you in the waiting room. And I just want to advise other members, I know you've been granted co-host authority and I know you may be trying to help out Annie and myself, but if you would not let anyone into the meeting with your co-host powers, because we actually have candidates that need to stay in the waiting room and not be let in during the interviews. So just an FYI. So the, we're ready to bring in the next candidate. So I will do that now, and that is going to be Roberta Jones. So I will, I will bring Roberta Jones in from the waiting room. Here we go. Okay, good evening, Roberta Jones. We've just let you in from the waiting room. And welcome to the Northampton School Committee. Are you here? Are you able to hear us?
I am here and I can hear you.
Excellent. Okay, sorry. I know you were sort of in and then put back in the waiting room. Sorry about that. The wonders of Zoom meetings. So good evening. I wanted to begin, we're going to ask you a series of questions this evening. And I wanted to begin by inviting you to make an opening statement, including your reasons for wanting to join the Northampton Public Schools. So the floor would be yours to make a, to make, to make an opening statement.
Okay, Roberta, I go by Bobby. I have been with the Hampshire Regional School District for twenty-four, going on twenty-five years now. I worked my way through the ranks. I started in Accounts Payable and Receivables and then went into Payroll and Human Resources. And then from there, I went on to become the Assistant Business Administrator, which was a newly-developed position. Our business administrator at the time was retired or retiring. And they went out for selection a couple of times and didn't find a suitable candidate. So they asked me to assume that position. So I did the work essentially as the business administrator with the retired business administrator mentoring me along the way. And then I did finally become the business administrator four years ago. So why I want to, I would really love to see what it's like to work in a single municipal school district. I think it would be really interesting to see what the variations are. And I think I would have a lot to grow on. I think that would give me different opportunities than I currently have with my current district. It wasn't an easy decision for me to apply, but I thought it might be time. So I did.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next question will come to you from Member Laura Fallon. Member Fallon?
Hi, welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. So my question is, the Northampton School Committee members serve two-year terms and we often have little to no background in school finance. As you know, one of our primary responsibilities, however, is to review, approve, and oversee an annual budget of over thirty million dollars. How would you describe your role in supporting us in that work?
Well, right now, currently what I'm doing, and I've done it before, but with the current school committees that I have, I've been working on a series of presentations that I give at each of the school committee, you know, each monthly school committee meeting. It's kind of been halted for now because it is budget season. But it sounds like hunting season, but budget season. So I put together different things, like how to show, in our district, it's a bit different because it's a regional. But I show different things like how the Chapter Seventy works, how, you know, Circuit Breaker is, what school choice accounts look like. So just different various trainings that can help the school committee members to learn a little bit more about that. And I'm always open for phone calls, emails. I work with five school committees now, five separate school committees. So I'm used to getting a lot of phone calls or, you know, emails or texts. So.
I can't even imagine working with five school committees. Thank you so much.
Okay, so the next question will come to you from our Vice Chair, Member Kaufman.
Hi, thank you for joining us. Thank you for your interest in working at the Northampton Public Schools. So we're right now in the middle of a FY twenty-two budget process, which is very tricky this year due to the need to facilitate both students' social and emotional recovery in the midst of very uncertain economy. My question is, can you describe your experience during a financial downturn and how you strategize the best use of all available funds for a multiple-year duration in order to make your financial recommendations to both the School Superintendent and the School Committee?
Yes, that's actually a good point. We are currently working on providing additional professional development to make up for that social-emotional recovery and just to get any students who are, you know, falling or have fallen behind. And so it's really hard in our towns. We are some small rural towns and we have, two out of our five towns have some really difficult financial situations. And it's, I've always been really eager to work with their select boards and their finance committees to help them see our picture and why we need what we need. The towns are often thinking, well, you know, the schools cost, you know, so much of their budget. And it's true, schools do cost the most of many cities, towns, regionals budgets. So I just, I just really work with everybody who's involved to give out the best budget that we can that's going to be the best for our students in the long run and for the schools themselves.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. The next question is going to come to you from Member Levy.
Hi, Bobby. Thanks so much for being here and for your responses so far. I also really appreciated reading what you wrote in your response to the question on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I wonder if you could talk a little bit about what you see as the role diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism play in the business administrator position? And then what areas do you think you would need to develop in order to bring that lens to the role?
I definitely would need to develop. And that's one reason, as I was saying earlier, that it would be quite interesting for me to work for one municipal school district where I could have. um, school district where I could have that opportunity to develop, to, sorry, to delve into, um, various items. But, um, one thing I can tell you as far as being, um, helpful with the budget is, just recently, my high school principal, middle high school principal, um, obtained Dr. Ibram Kendi. And so I was able to help her find, um, ways to, um, find the funding for that. Um, he's very costly, as you can imagine. Um, but it's, it's going to be really good. It's going to be great for the district. And I really look forward to, to being, um, more involved with that, that sort of thing, more so than I can be now with my district. It's, it's hard for me. My district is, like I said, five. I do five budgets. I have five school committees. Um, you know, so everything is kind of, you just keep rolling with the financial piece. You don't get too much time to go out and, and, uh, look into other areas. So I find that to be, that's where I say a, a place where I could grow.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then, um, I actually have the next question. And, um, I think you alluded to earlier, sort of, the, the, um, uh, the relationship between, um, in your case, the district and the towns. Um, I'm wondering what your working relationship has, um, been with, um, city officials, you know, treasurers, accountants, auditors, offices in, in the towns you serve? Um, because that's obviously a, an important relationship here in Northampton. And describe any notable challenges or success stories you've had in those working relationships.
Um, well, I think the challenges are the challenges themselves and the successes that I can overcome the challenges. Um, it is something that I do. I work with all the, um, city officials of five towns. As you know, the select boards of finance committees. Um, I work with them throughout the year and then especially during budget time. Um, auditors I work with are all independent auditors. We don't have any audit, um, audit departments within our district. Um, so I work with three to four, um, independent audit firms. And I do that for both the regular, um, school budgets, you know, answer any questions for the three municipals that I have. And then for the two regionals, I actually am very involved, um, with the audits that go on. So I'm used to working with all those departments, and, and I've never heard that, um, I've had, you know, there, there's times when it gets a little testy, but, um, tech, technically, I have not had any issues working with any of them. Um, I have a pretty good relationship with all.
Excellent. Yeah, well, obviously, if I, tough financial times can do that sometimes, so, understandable. So the next, uh, final question actually is from our Vice Chair, uh, Member Kaufman. Member Kaufman?
Yes, so, yep, this is our final question, uh, for you. And it's, uh, basically asking you what questions or final thoughts would you like to leave us with tonight?
Um, I think I have a lot of questions, but I don't think I would, um, bring them up here and now because, um, they're probably too, too, um, directed. Um, so I think if I were to get the position, I would probably, I'd be asking lots of questions. Uh, but I guess my only other question would be, what would be next in the process? And I, um, that would be that, so.
Um, Dr. Provost, do you want to, you want to answer that, or you want me to?
Um, we've already had an opportunity to talk, but I, I, I will, um, just answer this. And I think this might be something that we may want to do with all the candidates at the end. Um, so let me say it now, and I may be saying it again. After we finish the interviews for the three candidates tonight, there's an executive session scheduled on the agenda. The purpose of that is to give the committee members an opportunity to talk about what they heard. And then my hope is that they will, um, resume the meeting from that executive session with a vote to enter negotiations with one of you three. So hopefully you'll know tonight.
So you would go into a waiting room and, and wait there, or?
Yeah, we will have you in a waiting room. Um, if you, if you wish to do that, um, yeah, yes, that would be the, um, that would be the plan.
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, Member Kaufman, did you have any other final pieces to that?
I didn't, unless you wanted to add any other questions or, uh, make any other statements.
Um, I, I can make one, one statement. I'm just thinking, you know, usually a lot of places ask, you know, what, what's your successes? And, uh, I would say that one of my biggest successes is, uh, surviving the pandemic so far, um, with the grants that have come in, in the, in the complicated district that I have. It was, uh, flurry of spending, and so trying to keep track of everything like that was, uh, very challenging and, and very, kind of fun and interesting, too, at the same time. Um, but that's about all I have.
Yeah, I share your concerns for sure. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, um, Bobby, for being with us this evening. And, um, I will put you into the waiting room, well, we'll put you into the waiting room. And then we will, um, continue on with our interviews. And, um, and then, um, yes, um, and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll be back in touch with you on that. Uh, so we'll be putting you into the waiting room right now, and then we'll, um, we'll move on to our next interview.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, um, Annie, will you take care of that? Okay, so, um, so we are right now at 8:01, and our next interview was scheduled at 8:15. Dr. Provost, um, you, were you suggesting an alternative to, um, uh, I just want to clarify what, what you would like us to do this evening? Would you just let people all go? Or, um, and then notify them after the meeting? Or how, what do you ask? What do you, what would you like to do on that?
So I'm just thinking back to my own interview in Northampton, where I was in a green room with the two other candidates, and that was a little bit awkward. Um, so I think maybe after the last candidate is interviewed, we could either invite them back, thank them, and let them know we'll be in touch with the, um, the outcome, or put them into, you know, give them the option of being in individual waiting rooms so that they don't have to, um, you know, be with their, their other candidates while they're waiting for the committee to make a decision.
Okay, so we would do that after the next interview, or we would do that?
Yes, yes, I think after the next interview.
Okay, all right. Um, Member Boss, did you have a question?
I think they're not really together in a waiting room, just to clarify. Maybe other people.
Yeah, I think you're just.
My experience, so I think they're all just in their own space. They're not with each other.
Yes, I think that was my, that's my understanding as well, Member Boss, that, that you're just sort of in a queue waiting to come in, but you're not in a separate Zoom together in a waiting room. So, um, I see some other heads nodding, so thank you for that. Um, okay, so, um, do we have, oh, I'm sorry, uh, hand went up and down. Um, do we have, um, is, is Ms. Wang here yet? Uh, Annie?
She's not here yet.
Okay, good. We'll keep an eye on the way. I just wanted to make sure that she hadn't come in while I was, um, talking.
Keep an eye on it.
Okay. So, um, Annie is the, oh, that's Annie, that's you, Annie. Okay, sorry, I saw the A come in, and I was just making sure that it was not. You're muted, so I.
Uh, Tracy is texting her right now to see if she can come in a little bit early.
Okay.
Mayor Narcoits. I don't know why I'm echoing. Should we take an official break?
Um, we can certainly take a, um, we can certainly take a five-minute recess and reconvene in five minutes and see, um, and that, then we can restart, um, closer to.
Great.
Okay, so we'll take a five-minute recess as we await our next candidate. We're, we're a little ahead of schedule with our interviews, so we'll take a five-minute recess and resume in five minutes. And, um, we will continue with our school business administrator interviews, and we're pleased, um, to welcome our final candidate for the evening, Angela Wang. Good evening, Angela. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um, and, uh, I will, will be asking you, um, six questions this evening from various, uh, school committee members. And, um, and I will start off by just inviting you to make an opening statement to the school committee, um, including your reasons for wanting to join the Northampton Public Schools. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, very nice to see everybody. Um, hope you're doing well tonight. Thank you for your time, for having me here tonight. Um, my name is Angela Wang. Uh, I applied for the School Business Administrator, uh, position in the Northampton Public Schools. Um, I came with, uh, my master's in accounting degree, and also, uh, with more than 10 years of experience in school business and finance management. Um, I worked in, uh, Springfield Public Schools, South Valley Public Schools in the past. Currently, I'm the Director of Business and Finance for the Vernon Public Schools in Connecticut. I'm licensed, um, as School Business Administrator in both Massachusetts and Connecticut. I'm also licensed as, uh, Massachusetts, um, Procurement Officer, uh, which is known as the MCPBO, um, certificate. Um, so I'm interested in working in Northampton Public Schools because, uh, this is not the first time I applied for, um, had Northampton Public Schools. Um, I, um, I, my career has, my, throughout my career has been, I've been working as a school business, um, and finance, um, for, uh, nonprofit public schools. Uh, this is my passion. This is my experience. Um, and North, I, I'm pretty familiar with Northampton Public Schools, um, uh, because I, I, I know a lot of people who shared experience, uh, within, uh, the Northampton Public Schools through, uh, my network in Massachusetts and, and NASBO, um, Association. Um, and, um, I, I understand that Northampton is a, um, very diverse community, uh, with, um, very strong support from the city. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm really pleased to see the over 5% budget increase for this fiscal year, which means that, you know, um, the whole community is for education, which is wonderful. I see a lot of positive, uh, trends in the Northampton Public Schools, such as the increasing school enrollment, um, more choice in students, less choice out, and so on and so forth. So I'm really excited, and, um, and that's all about me.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that opening statement. Um, I'll now turn it over to my colleague member, uh, Laura Fallon, who has the next question.
Hi, thank you so much for joining us. Um, so my question is, um, our Northampton School Committee members, we serve two-year terms, um, and often, committee members have little to no background in school finance. Um, as you know, one of our primary responsibilities, however, is to review, approve, and oversee, um, an annual budget of over $30 million. How would you describe your role in supporting us, um, in doing that work?
Good question. Uh, school finance is not rocket science. Um, so I, if, if there's any confusion, I'll make it easy for, for you. Um, it's my job to communicate information to the committee member to support you in decision-making. Um, you know, I usually, I always work through the superintendent for the school committee. Whenever you need a, uh, analysis for a contract negotiation, uh, budgeting, uh, projections, priorities, scenarios. I'll work on those numbers for you. And more importantly, I strongly believe that I need to make those information user-friendly. So I always look at my presentation of the information to make sure I don't throw out any jargons to you and that's very confusing. So I always, I, I all welcome feedback all the time and to make things easier for you. Because like I said, it is my job to support the superintendent, to support the school committee, to make the, you know, informed decisions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the next question comes to you from our vice chair, member Lonnie Kaufman.
Hi, welcome and thank you for your interest in working for the Northampton Public Schools. So we are right now in the middle of our FY '22 budget process, which is tricky this year due to the need to facilitate student social and emotional recovery in the midst of very uncertain economy. So my question is, can you describe your experience during a financial downturn? And how you strategize the best use of all available funds for a multiple-year duration in order to make your financial recommendations to the superintendent and to the school committee?
Good, thank you. That's a big question. And it's a good question too, because this year has been really, really challenging for school districts. Especially right now, in terms of budgeting, we have to make a lot of assumptions. Are we going to go back full-time? Is there going to be remote learning opportunities for students? You know, all the questions that need to be answered, we might not have the answers yet. So for the budget process, you know, for the past districts I worked for, we always start with a zero-based budget to look at what are the needs. I noticed that some priorities in the budget document for this year about social emotional learning, you know, for students and PD and BCBA programs and things like that. So first of all, you know, I would suggest that we, you know, look at the school committee's priorities for the next fiscal year. And then around those priorities, we're going to look at all the funding sources, especially for next year. Esther Two Funding will be available for school districts. How much we're going to get and how much, what are we going to focus on spending? You know, what kind of categories we're going to budget for that grant. It's, it's one big question to think about. So in terms of personnel budget, which is very important, the biggest piece of the, within the budget, you know, if we're going to increase the personnel budget, we have to look at, you know, down the road, how much is going to be the benefits, how much is going to be the salary, you know, and to look at. So in, in short, just to look at the budget for all funds and all aspects, including personnel, which is the bigger piece, and the supplies and services. Did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate the response. Yeah.
Okay, um, our next question comes to you from member Dina Levy.
Hi Angela, thanks so much for being with us. I appreciated reading your statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about what you see as the role diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-racism play in the business administrator position? And what areas do you think you would need to develop in order to bring that lens to the role?
Thank you. Like I said in the statement, I've worked with, you know, in the past, I've worked with very diverse school districts before. I worked, you know, both on, on the employee side and also on the employer side as well as the district side. Like when I was in, working in Springfield. I think if I worked in Northampton, if there's a, a school committee, a policy or, or statement about diversity, a lot of districts are doing that right now. You know, it's my job as a professional to adhere to that statement 100%. And in terms of my, my role, the biggest piece would be to make sure we budget equally for all the diversity groups, which means we were, we're going to make sure we maintain equity in the budget for all different groups of students and families to support them, to support their student learning. Did that answer your question or?
Yeah, it did. There is a second part to the question, which is, in order to do that work, is there any growth or, or training that you would need or want to pursue?
I think, well, in the past, I was very involved with the MASBO program with the diversity, you know, being a very hot, hot heated, you know, issue in the past couple of years. I'm sure there's trainings offered at the MASBO level, but I'm willing to research on more training opportunities for me to learn and grow and do a better job at it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I actually have the next question, and that is, can you describe your working relationship with city officials? Obviously, obviously, there's the municipal finance, and then there's the city finance. So this would include officials like the treasurer, the accountant, the auditor's office. And just in describing your relationship, could you describe any notable challenges or success stories you've had in that relationship between the school and city side on finance?
Sure, absolutely. In the past districts, all the, all the districts I've worked at, I worked very, very closely with the town government or the city government because the school is the biggest department within the town or city entity for, for almost every, you know, municipality. So we, so for example, I worked with the city officials on various audits for the grants and even the annual audits for the city and the school. I provide information to the city government, to the city officials to make sure they have enough information to provide to the auditors, and we work together on a daily basis to make sure we, we supply enough information to the auditors for the audit report. Also during the budget process, you know, we, we exchange notes on what's going on, especially in the benefits piece. A lot of times, the city covers the benefits for the school employees or vice versa. So we're gonna, we're gonna communicate constantly about what's going to change. What, what are we looking at about health insurance rates for next year? And how about unemployment? How about pension? And so those conversations are happening every day. Right now, working in Vernon, I have a weekly meeting with the town finance director. We have a very good working relationship. So when I started in Vernon, you asked me about a, a, a challenges and success story. So when I first started in Vernon, the town finance director decided to take away the, some munis privileges from the school department. So we had conversations about what's his rationale and things like that, you know. Some conversations were like a really challenging or like a heated debate about who should have what and, which is understandable. And, and we, we, you know, he told me about his story and why he decided to do it, and I, I looked up, you know, and I, I did some research in munis and really listened to him. And we, we, we were able to reach an agreement about what we both feel comfortable with. So right now, we have a very, very good working relationship and, and, you know, I, I, we both, on both sides, we don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call each other and we bounce ideas off of each other. And so things are going very smoothly between the schools and, and, and the, the town finance department, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that and appreciate that, um, that success story, challenge that turned into a success story. Thank you. So the final question this evening is from our vice chair again, member Kaufman.
Yes. So yes, this is the final question, and that basically is to ask you what questions or final thoughts you would like to leave us with tonight.
Thank you. Um, I, I think I asked this question the first round as well, and, but I, I wanted to, I, I didn't see everybody there in the first round. And if you could, if you volunteer to comment on the qualities you think this new hire must have for this position to be able to succeed and, and, and do great contributions to the Northampton Public Schools, please share with me. Don't jump by the ones.
Do you want me to take the first step, Mayor Norquist, or?
Sure, go ahead, member Kaufman, please.
Yeah. It's a good question because I hadn't thought about the answer, but I have been thinking about it tonight. So I would say again that, I mean, I, I, I love the idea of a person in, in the role that you're seeking to be a key member of the administrative leadership team who doesn't work in isolation but is completely involved in not only the budgetary and financial decisions, which is very time-consuming, but also the other efforts that we're undertaking within the district, which all involve, many involve finances to some respect, one respect or another. While I was saying that, I also believe that somebody who is really smart and savvy and understands numbers, what you describe as not rocket science, for some of us it is, and it can get messy. And there's a lot of decisions that we need to reach. So I think the other aspect is for somebody who really brings a way of describing data and numbers to us in a manner that we can understand and make effective, strong decisions from.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I am a data person, love to work with numbers. On the other hand, like I said, I, I, it's, it's kind of my, you know, it's the fun part to make it easy for other people to understand.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So do you have any other, just sort of final thoughts you'd want to leave us with, just to close out? Member Kaufman, reiterate his questions, anything you'd like to leave us with before we close the interview?
Sure. I'd like to thank everyone for your time tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to interview with you all. Like I said, I'm very excited about this opening, and I applied with enthusiasm. I believe I'm pretty well-qualified with my background, my experience, my qualifications. And more importantly, I, I have my passion to work in school business and finance, and I have a track record of making things more proficient, more efficient, and more user-friendly for all the dishes I've worked for in the past. So, and I thank you for all your consideration and thank you for your time. And I wish all of you the best for this challenging year, and hopefully it's going to be behind us soon.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Wang. So right now, hmm, interesting, we have, the other two candidates are in the waiting room. And so I am going to just sort of lay the ground, lay out the groundwork for how we're going to proceed. So I think I may just quickly put you in the waiting room, and then I will invite you and the other candidates out as we just, I just want to cover our process a little bit here. So if you don't mind, we'll just ask, we'll just put you in the waiting room briefly, and then we will, uh, we will be right back with you, okay?
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
So, um, to the members of the school committee, so we actually, in looking at the agenda, I think we've got something a little bit flipped here. We have first an executive session scheduled, and this is my oversight, I should have caught this, for the actual negotiations over a contract. But obviously, the, the key piece is item number nine on the agenda, which is the actual selection of, of the person to whom we wish to negotiate with. So that piece of it, actually, the discussion and the nomination of a candidate, et cetera, happens in open session. And so we'll have a discussion about that. My question was, um, uh, I, I guess, I guess I, we can invite all the candidates to come into the meeting and to be part of the meeting, or we can tell them that we will contact the person afterwards. I'm just trying to understand the best way to do that. Obviously, this usually happens, and people are, you know, in another room, and it's, obviously Zoom is a little bit different than the way we typically do these interviews. So I can certainly admit all the candidates and explain to them that we will be moving into an open deliberation on, on them, and they're welcome to stay with us, or they're welcome to watch on YouTube, or they're welcome to just leave this evening, and then we will be in contact afterwards. So I think that's, I think I've just talked myself into what I'm going to do. So I think I'm going to bring them all in, thank them all again, and just let them know what our next steps in the process are. So, um, let me just do that quickly. Okay, so I just want to say welcome to our three candidates, Courtney Laborius, Roberta Jones, and Angela Wang. Thank you. I know you've been in the waiting room. I just want to let you know where we are in the process. The school committee has now completed our interviews with each of you. And so we are now going to move to having a deliberation and discussion and a, and a vote, if possible, to enter into a negotiation with a chosen school business administrator. You're certainly, this is, will be an interactive process. You're certainly welcome to stay and watch. It's a public meeting, obviously. Or you can log off and watch on our live stream, and/or you can just log off, and we will be in touch with you in the future. But I mainly wanted to just thank you once again on behalf of the school committee and obviously the Northampton Public Schools for applying for the position and going through the various interview rounds that you've gone through and background checks and reference checks, and putting yourself forward for this important position. So, um, so I will leave you to choose whatever you wish to choose on, from there, and then the school committee will now move into discussions of the interview processes and then potentially move to a vote. I thought it would be important, first of all, because we did have a fairly extensive screening process, and we had a, a very diverse committee made up of school committee and staff and administration who worked on the actual screening process to, to get a report from, from the findings of that committee and any recommendations from that committee. And so I was actually going to ask if Dr. Provost could potentially give us a, a, a summary of those, um, of that. I know the committee has been provided with all of that background material as well as, you know, the, the applications, et cetera, on background, but I wanted to know if he could give us an overview. Member Kaufman, you had a question first.
Yes, I just wanted to double-check out of fairness to the candidates. We, we can't do this in executive session. Are you sure about that?
Uh, yes, I'm quite sure. The, the, the executive session is really for, as it says, it's for contract negotiations. So typically, it's when you've offered a, offered a position to someone, then you are negotiating a contract. So the actual deliberation and the vote really needs to take place in an open session. You're allowed to do a screening process in executive session, but the actual decision deliberation has to happen in an open session. And again, I, I, when we put together the agenda, I, I didn't catch that, and should have been, the order should have been reversed.
Okay.
Member boss.
Thank you.
Yep, member boss.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify my understanding because it conflicts a little bit with what I think I heard, which is, we are going to make a decision now and vote on it. And if we are going to offer this job, that candidate would stay around and go into executive session with us afterward tonight. Is that correct? And if we are going to offer this job, that candidate would stay around and go into executive session with us afterward tonight. Is that correct?
One potential way, I, I think what I'm actually going to suggest, just given the agenda that we have this evening, and this is something we've done in the past, is I think we could take a vote, and we could authorize the superintendent to enter into a negotiation on our behalf, subject to the, to the parameters of the job posting. And then he could bring back to us a potential contract that then we could go into a future executive session to discuss. And if necessary, we could actually go into an executive session with the candidate if there were aspects of that that needed to have direct negotiations. So I think we, we, you may recall, we did something similar with Ms. Lamica when we hired her. We did an executive session to talk about certain aspects. So I think my, for me, I would say we would have a deliberation, we would vote, and, and then we would authorize the superintendent to actually enter into those negotiations on our behalf. And obviously, I could work with him on that, and then he would bring a proposed contract back to the school committee. And that, and that could be discussed in executive session, obviously, because we wouldn't, obviously, we wouldn't discuss a contract negotiation in an open session. Does that answer your question, Member Boss? Okay.
No, I have a process question as well, Mayor.
Sure.
Sorry, I just, so traditionally, this is my first round with it, the candidate, when it was in live meetings, the candidates all came back to the public session to hear the deliberation, or were they like in a waiting room while the public was deliberating?
Uh, you know, they typically would not come back. They would typically leave after their interview. So they would certainly, but obviously, the interview was broadcast live on television and streamed on YouTube, so they could certainly watch it that way. But no, they typically did not come back. They left the interview room. And I mean, this is the challenge of a public body conducting interviews. You know, when I conduct interviews, I'm not doing it in front of an audience, and when the candidate leaves the room, I can have a discussion and make a decision. And so that's just the difference between how a public body has to operate. So, so I don't know that we can ban, bar them from the meeting, because it is a public meeting. So that's the best answer I can give you. Dr. Provost.
Can I just say, sorry to cut you off, Courtney. I don't actually think it matters. I will talk about when I was hired, which is back in normal times, I'll say before COVID. And I was actually watching the school committee deliberating me. It's, it's just the way it is. Whether, whether they're there or not, they are, have a right to the information which is in the public domain. So I think we should just let the process go forward.
I just want to say thank you.
Courtney, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I apologize. I'll just come off, so it's less awkward, but I'll watch on YouTube, and I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um.
Amanda Wang was raising her hand.
Who was?
I thought I saw Amanda, Angela, Angela Wang.
Okay, I.
Raising her hand.
Did not see her hand, but Angela, if you're there, you can certainly unmute and.
Sorry, I didn't know if I could ask a question in this, in this process. So I just want to say thank you for offering me to stay. I think I'm going to leave after Dr. Provost's comment, and so no pressure, everybody. And I wish everyone a good luck.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So any other, any other questions process-wise before I turn it over to Dr. Provost to give us a report? I don't know, Dr. Provost, were you waiting for Angela to?
No, no, you asked if there were any questions. I thought you were providing wait time for the questions.
Oh, no, no, no. I was just about the process. So I was going to ask, I was going to ask if you could please provide a report. If they want to just summarize, possibly just give a quick synopsis of the recruitment process and the screening committee. And then if you could just review with us the recommendations that at least that came out of the, the steering committee or screening committee, rather.
Sure. So as you mentioned, we did have a very large and diverse screening committee who reviewed all of the paper applications. In the first round, the, the applications were scored blind. We had our office staff remove any identifying information from the applications just as a way of kind of trying to guard against implicit bias potentially creeping into the process. We didn't want to be exposed to any information about the candidates other than their qualifications. On the basis of that, all of the candidates were ranked against qualities that we had identified in the job description. And there were four that scored much higher than all the rest. We had invited all four of them in for interviews, and three accepted. When we, let me just say this before I get into what the, the result of our interview was. I, I think on behalf of the screening committee and Member, Member Busansky was your representative on this, so I think she can back me up on this. On behalf of the committee, we were very happy with the, with the interest in this position. We had many applicants who were qualified and appropriately licensed. We had many candidates who were well experienced. The four that we selected and the three who came in for interviews, as I said, stood out from all the rest primarily for a couple of reasons. One was their experience, both in Massachusetts and in other states. And the second was their detailed knowledge of the technical aspects of this position. So I'll also share with you some things that the rest of the committee didn't know, because after we conducted the interviews, I was the one who got to do the background checks and talk to everyone's references. And I can tell you that all three of these candidates received glowing references from people who had worked with them in the past. So not only was their professionalism evident in their paperwork and the answers they gave to the, the questions we asked them, but people they worked with confirmed that they're all really good people. They're hard workers, they're loyal, they're very professional. And, you know, I think you have in front of you three people who are at the top of their game as school business managers, and we're very fortunate to be in the position to have the three to choose from. With that said, I'll say that we had a very clear result in our, in our round of interviews with the candidates. Every member of the committee chose Courtney as their number one candidate. The other two candidates, Bobby and Angela, we ranked within one one-hundredth of a point of each other, which is why we felt that we needed to send them both along to the full committee. But we were split on the second two. Some of us had ranked Bobby higher and others had ranked Angela higher. But in my experience, it's unusual to get a unanimous decision from a screening committee. And so I think it's important that the committee hears that, and I, I hope that you will support the, the findings of the, of the screening committee.
Member Busansky, did you want to speak at all as someone who also served on the screening committee? Just add anything to that as, as our representative on the, on that process?
Right, sure. Really, I mean, all I can add is really just confirming what Superintendent Provost said, that, you know, we were impressed with all three candidates. Courtney was our unanimous pick, and I thought that was really interesting, especially because we had a, this search committee really was made up of folks looking at it from different angles. And so, or heard I kind of had checked all those boxes. I thought was really impressive, and that we were, and that Angela and Bobby were a complete tie for second place, which was also really interesting to see that happen, so.
Okay. Um, so I'm wondering, are there, are there any questions? Member Levy, do you have a question or a comment, or maybe questions for, for Member Busansky or Dr. Provost?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. My question is about process. And a number of the candidates talked about how they would present information, and I'm wondering if you asked any of the candidates, the candidates, to end up, as a part of the interview process that you did, to, to give any kind of presentation to your committee?
We did not. I can tell you that in the reference checks for all three candidates, people who had worked with them in the past had spoken about their ability to make presentations to the school committee, and had said that that was a strong skill that all three possess.
Okay, thanks.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Um, I must say that I felt like, I, I'll just say that I felt like Angela and Courtney, to me, stood out in terms of this process. And, you know, I was trying to review a bit of the applications, but of course, the, the search committee was, was far more in the weeds on that. And so I wondered if you could kind of characterize why Courtney rose, rose to the top of that pack.
So I, I believe it had to do with the depth of first experience and different kinds of experiences. Obviously, Bobby has the most experience in terms of being in the role of a school business administrator and all the different roles that that, that person supervises. However, that was in the context of a single district. I think that the committee felt that Courtney's experience working not only with city-level agencies and school districts, but even state-level agencies and private colleges just gave her a little bit of an edge there and the experience.
Um, thanks for that comparison with Bobby. My, my question was actually a comparison with Angela, because at least from the discussion tonight, I felt like Angela was a stronger candidate than Bobby. And I also heard Rebecca trying to chime in.
Oh, it's okay. I wanted to see, Dr. Provost, if you have anything to add to Emily's follow-up.
No, so I, I would say that I would, with Angela too, the experience comparison, I think, comes out a little stronger as we were looking at it for Courtney. And again, just for the different levels of government she's worked at. And I also have to say, I think that the size of some of the agencies that she worked with was, was impressive to me, at least. Angela did work with Springfield Public Schools, which is a very diverse and very large school district, much larger than North Hampton. But her role at that time was as a financial analyst, so her responsibility was a little bit more limited there.
And I was just gonna, I was just gonna add, I, Emily, I don't know if this, or Member Seraphie Cox, I don't know if this exactly answered the question comparing Courtney to Angela, but it did feel like in our interview, we got a really strong sense that not just about Courtney's depth of experience, but her breadth of experience and her also ability to work as a team player, her, the importance she places on having mentors and mentoring others, of listening and developing a trusting relationship, just was really impressive to hear about. I also think she brings a lot of creativity with her because of all that experience, that we just really serve our district well as we're, you know, headed into this kind of, you know, next chapter, hopefully post-pandemic soon, so.
That's really helpful. Thank you so much.
Member Levy?
Thanks. I have a follow-up question to that. I really appreciate hearing from both of you about that, because I too thought that Angela struck me tonight as a, as a very competitive candidate, along with Courtney. And I'm looking at the rubric that, that Superintendent Provost included in our materials, and I don't see any of the things that either of you have, have talked about on the rubric. And I'm wondering if you, as a search committee, had a conversation about what the qualities were that you were looking for in a successful candidate in addition to what's on the rubric, and whether you were in agreement of what those were and how they're defined as you were, as you were looking at the candidates, and whether you also asked, were able to assess all of the candidates based on those criteria that you came to?
Yeah, so I'll say that the first rubric obviously was based off the job posting. We wanted to make sure that that was true to what we had put out there, what we were looking for. And then the other conversation about things we were looking for in a candidate, I think, came through our process of developing questions. So we spent a lot of time as a group thinking, I brought some sample questions, we brought some questions from the prior iterations of this, of hiring for this position. But then we had a conversation about whether that was sufficient, and we added, I would say, we added probably forty percent new questions based on specific qualities that we were looking for. I would say probably one of the main additions from last iterations of this was inviting the written responses, including the written response about diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that's, that's where that conversation came in.
Member Gold, who can't raise his hand, apparently has been raising his thumb occasionally, and I've been missing it. So, Member Gold, calling you next.
Yeah, I was wondering if any of, anyone that's been on the committee for a while can speak to the interview process that we had with Kami Lamica, and just in terms of what you were looking for and, and what we got, I mean, I guess I feel very, I feel very lucky to have had Kami as our business administrator, and just in the short time I've had it, and I'm just wondering, is there anything that you're, anyone who's been on here for a while has seen? A comparison between the candidates and our experience that we've had so far, or any connections you can make? Because having not done this before, I'd love some historical knowledge on that, if that makes any sense.
Um, hmm. Maybe Dr. Provost could do that, but I mean, I can certainly tell you from my perspective, I mean, we certainly, we had come out of a period of having a little bit of flux in the position. And we had a, we had hired a very experienced and longtime school business administrator, Candy, who was here before Kami. And, and then when she left, we obviously sort of, I think, had an understanding of, of, of having somebody who had such a broad experience, what that brought to the district and the value that we brought to the district. So I think that that certainly impacted the lens when we looked for our next business administrator. And obviously, when Kami became available and, and applied, that was, it was, it was a really, I think, great transition, because she too had brought lots of years of experience and, and had a breadth of knowledge. And so I think that was sort of the lens that we looked through. So I think obviously, you know, when I'm hearing the committee report that they were looking for somebody who had a pretty wide breadth of experience, that rings true to me in terms of, in terms of, you know, what this committee has been, has been looking for, some stability, and somebody that does bring a breadth of experience in, in, in school finance and finance in general, possibly even city finance as well. So, so I think that's my, my quick answer. I don't know if other members want to add to that. I see Member Kaufman has his hand up. Member Kaufman? Okay, um, hmm, okay. Member Seraphie Cox has.
I wanted to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'm not exactly sure how I'm supposed to word this, but I guess I would like to make a motion that the school committee vote to enter into negotiations with Courtney. I don't remember her last name.
Laborius.
Laborius, thank you.
Okay, and would you possibly amend that slightly to, to authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations on our behalf?
Yes, yes, I would be happy to do that.
Okay, so there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so Member Boss has seconded. So, do you have a question or any of, Member Boss, your hand is up, and Member Seraphie Cox, your hand is up, and I think that was to make the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so Member Boss, did you have anything to add to your second?
I did, thank you. I wanted to just say I felt like we were really lucky to have three such strong candidates, and I enjoyed hearing from all of them, and it's.
And it sounds to me like Member Busansky and Superintendent Provost, you think any of the three of them are very capable of doing a good job, and I think that's really great. And so I'm comfortable moving ahead with what with what the subcommittee, I'm not sure what to call it, the search committee is recommending, since I'm presuming they had a little bit more interaction and also time to dig in and talk to the references. But the one thing I'd like to add, I guess, is a question. I'd like to echo what I heard some of my colleagues say that I was really impressed with Ms. Wang tonight also. And if the negotiation was to fall apart, is it appropriate to acknowledge what we would do in that case at this point while we're talking about it? Or do we wait for something like that? Because
I think that, yeah, I mean, I think our practice has always been we negotiate with one person. And then if the negotiations for some reason are not consummated, then we come back to the committee. And we certainly have made offers to other people in the past. I think that did happen in one of our prior searches where someone withdrew. And so so that would we would definitely come back and see if the pool if the other folks were still available and interested, that's typically been the the path. So that would that would be something that Dr. Provost would bring back to us. And then we'd have to make a decision whether we wanted to restart the process or whether we wanted to reach out to the other semifinalists to see if they would be interested. But I think it's premature to have that discussion, obviously, given the vote that's on the floor right now. So any other comments on this? So there's been a motion. Oh, Member Kaufman.
Sure, I just want to, you know, acknowledge that we have a say in the hiring, but nobody works as closely with this person as Dr. Provost. So I think you've made it semi clear. I just want to see after tonight's conversation and the other messages that you sent, does any single candidate stand out in your mind as the person that you wouldn't be most comfortable working with?
Yes, Courtney Laborious.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I think I'll ask the clerk to call the role. The motion on the table is a vote to offer the position of school business manager to school business administrator to Courtney Laborious and to authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations. I'll ask the clerk to call the role.
Member Kaufman.
So this is simply a yes now then?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Epstein.
Mayor Narcoit.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Vote is nine in favor and one abstention.
Okay, so the school committee has adopted the motion to to offer the position of school business administrator to Courtney Laborious and to authorize the superintendent to enter into contract negotiations and bring that back to us. Obviously, again, thank you to her and obviously to Roberta Jones and Angela Wang for interviewing with us tonight and obviously for their participation in this process. So with that, we will now move on into our agenda. And I am proud to say that we are twenty five minutes ahead of schedule. We had we had scheduled public comment for nine twenty five, which seemed rather late. But it's actually eight fifty nine by my count. So thank you to everyone who has hung in there in for the first part of the meeting. I'm now going to move into the public comment period. And I know we have a lot of folks that are here tonight to speak. And I know that we got a lot of public comment at the last meeting, particularly on the issue that's next on the agenda after public comment. They vote on the Confederate flag ban. And so I guess I would just say that knowing that we probably have a lot of folks here, if you could, and we have a very clearly delineated policy that's on the, actually, we put it on the agenda so that people would have a lot of opportunity to preview it. So I guess I would just ask that folks, if you could try to be succinct and just so that we can allow as many people as possible, but also, you know, ensure that this vote happens not too too late at night. And so, but I will obviously offer the three minutes, but I guess I would just ask people that if you can speak in less than three minutes, that would also be appreciated. So our process here is we ask people to use the raise hand function in Zoom, which for some of you may still be on the participant menu. For others, it may have moved over to the reactions menu. If you have a new version of Zoom, along the bottom, there's a reactions menu, which has a raise hand bar. If you're calling on a phone, you would have to use your star functions and star six would allow you, I believe, to raise your hand. So and I will basically go through the list and I will I will call on people. I'll ask you to unmute. I'll ask you to identify yourself and where you live. And then I'll ask you to please offer your public comments up to three minutes. And I will keep a timer and and just give you a warning as you approach three minutes. So the first person who has signed up to speak and has their hand raised, rather, is Alex Miccolini. Alex, if you want to go ahead and unmute.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so I actually want to ask a question and make a comment. My question is to Dr. Provost. It's about the cap of students in the remote classroom for the elementary, the elementary level. I know that he said in his memo that he is going to be expecting the number of students in the elementary remote classrooms to go up. But I was wondering, for example, in my in my son's class, there are already twenty three students. And I know the Massachusetts cap is twenty five. So I was wondering how much is he going to be raising that cap? Is he going to be raising that cap or is he going to stay the same? So that's my question. And then my
So Alex, I'll stop your time briefly, but I just, we don't actually, the public comment, and I should have prefaced this, is a time for people to make comments. It's not interactive. It's not, we don't, we don't respond or or ask questions. I know that I'm sure Dr. Provost would be willing to contact you after the meeting to give you that information. But we don't, we don't, this is a time for the public to offer comments. So your question will have to be rhetorical for this evening, but and then we can have Dr. Provost or someone from his staff follow up with you. So go ahead and continue.
Absolutely, I can email him directly about that question. Okay, so for the common part of my of my comment is I would like to ask Dr. Provost and everybody who is involved in this decision to please consider having the teacher that is right now in the remote classroom with the kids to stay in that classroom. You know how the kids have gone through so much this year already, they've gone through so many changes. This is some stability that they have in their lives and it'd be really great if you could take that into consideration when you decide whether the classes are going to change or stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your for your questions and comments. The next person whose hand is raised, I have a first name, Mike. Mike, go ahead and unmute.
Thank you. My name is Mike Stein. I live in Columbus Avenue in Northampton. Just have a few comments that are somewhat related to the previous caller. First is that, you know, I understand that this decision about reopening is being made at the state level and that there's little sort of leeway that the the city has. And I, as much as I'm opposed to it, I kind of agree about not not pursuing a waiver for the reasons that Dr. Provost mentioned. With that said, you know, it is just, you know, in outright violation of CDC guidelines. And I would push the city where possible, where there is discretion, to follow CDC guidelines, whether it's around sports or other things. I mean, right now we are at high risk, according to the CDC. Six foot distancing, obviously, they want to throw that out the window so that they can get everyone back in the classroom. They can't do that with six feet. But anywhere where there is the option of, you know, following CDC guidelines, that would be great. I'm pretty appalled that the state of Massachusetts is carrying on like this. I feel like I'm in Northampton, Texas, and I don't understand this level of sort of vitriol for educators. And, you know, just to the Dr. Provost's point earlier, you know, there's a massive shortage of vaccine. So, you know, even by Governor Baker's own words recently, the demand outstrips supply ten to one. So the idea that we're going to get everyone vaccinated who isn't educated before this begins is just impossible. You know, for Pfizer, it's five weeks that you're fully vaccinated. For Moderna, it's six weeks. And even if people got shots the day that they were officially eligible after the whole CBS and Governor Baker thing, they would barely, if if ever, make it by April fifth. So I'm very concerned. And I want to thank all the educators and and just, I feel really bad for what you're being asked to do and forced to do from a safety perspective, but also from a disruption perspective. We've done a lot for our kids throughout an incredibly difficult year, and I deeply appreciate it. And now you're being asked to re-remount the wheel for, you know, thirty seven, forty days of school. And I'm worried about just in general, the ableism of all of this as well. There's a lot of people that just can't send their kids back. They might be disabled and ineligible, unable to get the vaccine. Kids might have certain susceptibilities. So I would push the city as much as possible to provide as much equity in the virtual learning as possible to accommodate those folks under, you know, tremendous pressure from the state government that wants to make this happen no matter what. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next person whose hand is up is Maritha Wallace. Maritha, you can go ahead and unmute.
All right, Mayor Narcoit, Superintendent Provost, school committee members, colleagues and students. My name is Maritha Wallace and I am an ESP at JFK. And I'm writing to you tonight about the Confederate flag and its presence in our schools. As important as this issue is, the use of the Confederate flag in this manner is a symptom of a larger problem that is present here in our schools. The issue of persistent institutional and personal racism perpetrated by policies and individual actions of of our administration, faculty, staff and students in the Happy Valley. While I would love to say that there is only a race issue here, I cannot. There is homophobia, transphobia, xenophobia, sexism, antisemitism, ableism, and as well as the uptick of violence towards Asian, Asian American and Pacific Island Islander communities in our school. These pressing pressing issues need to be at the forefront of this conversation. We cannot dismantle one and not the others. Hatred and bigotry in our community affects everyone and will not take and we must take action now for equity for all members of our community. The flag symbolizes hate for groups that are considered other, and thus it needs to be banned from our school communities. If you proudly, if you want to proudly display the flag in your house, that's your right. However, BIPOC, the LGBTQIA plus community and many other communities do not need to be reminded of this hateful symbol. This is the truth of the matter. Banning the Confederate flag will not be able to end these issues. It is a start. Let this be the beginning, let this be the beginning of systemic policies within our district. I might suggest that we hire a more diverse staff to benefit all of our students, not meet a quota, but because representation matters. The next thing I would suggest is having a curriculum that teaches the true and correct history of the United States that that includes those outside the dominant culture. If that were to happen, there would be no need for a celebratory month for each group, but it would be embedded within our curriculum and undoubtedly influence our children more profoundly than each month. Lastly, there needs to be continual and quality education for our faculty and staff. Our district must set a tone for all educators that teaching requires difficult self-discovery and uncomfortable conversations. Having these conversations is hard. The only way to get better at these conversations is to continue to have them. We need to challenge ourselves to have a growth mindset and set the tone for our students. Many educators have been taught inaccurate history of the United States. We all have prejudice, and that includes me. But we all have the ability to choose what we do with those prejudices. Teachers must lend a hand in offering and receiving help, not because this is easy, but it is because it is hard. A quote from John F. Kennedy, where I work. We want to be better for our students, ourselves and each other. This work can requires continual work, challenging what you what you know and being flexible to replace it with new information. This is the work of becoming an anti-racist school system. So while banning the Confederate flag is a necessary part, we still have a long way to go to become a safe and equitable school system for all. I request that the school committee take the small step while committing to everyone that we all can do better by ourselves and our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your words, Maritha. The next person who has their hand up this evening is Heather Brown. Heather, if you could just unmute and identify yourself and where you live.
Hi, I'm Heather Brown. I live in Florence. I work at Northampton High School. I have a middle schooler at JFK. And I'm here to speak as the Vice President of the Northampton Association of School Employees. Some of the things I say, I will say, kind of echo of what Maritha just said. Trying to be concise, I'll cut out some of this. But I do want to start by thanking you for scheduling the banning of the Confederate flag on this meeting's agenda tonight. NACE, as you probably know, has sent the committee an extensive document supporting the ban of the Confederate flag and other hate symbols. So I hope you've had the opportunity to read it. This document's filled with examples from across the nation of schools and other organizations who have already done this. I want to state here for the public record that NACE encourages that this ban also include other hate symbols so that our school community can live up to the declarations made in our new NPS Code of Conduct. And so the wider community can be a place that's safe and welcoming for everyone. We have to take firm action now, not to show that our not to speak, but to show that our schools will be a place where educators and students can teach and learn in a welcoming and affirming environment. A goal we have in education is open dialogue and hate symbols disable the trust that's necessary for that kind of dialogue. We stand with Principal Caldwell and his poignant recorded message, along with many in the broader community who are organizing, speaking and acting against the attacks on our school community. We all know that public, Northampton Public Schools must take decisive action to root out racism while we continue to vigilantly stand together in solidarity. Banning symbols and images is one step that we take. This is a small part of what we have to do towards our goal of becoming becoming an anti-racist community. Thank you to the committee and all of you who are joining us in this work.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. The next person who has their hand up is Jose Adostra. Jose, if you could just unmute and let us know your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Jose and I live in Northampton. And thank you all for your time. So I I guess I'm here to comment on two things. And one is that Commissioner Riley is a clown who hasn't given anyone enough time to get prepared to get back into school by the deadline that he's put forward. And I don't really think like, as a community, I think that what we can do is that if we can, if you can keep your kids home. I was just at another meeting and I said the same thing. If you can keep your kids home and there's not like adequate room, like keep your kids home if you can and let people that really need to send their kids to school do that. Because I don't really see that the state is giving the school very much option. We don't know that all the teachers are vaccinated and the families, we don't know that their families are vaccinated and they can't tell us. They can't tell us that they think it's stupid. Only we can say that. So, you know, we should, it's dumb. We should, we, there should be more time or it should be summer vacation now. We should, we, there should be more time or it should be summer vacation now. Until we're all vaccinated anyways. And, but yeah, so if you can keep your kids home, please do, uh, but, uh, I'm sure they'll try their hardest like they have been. And I would like to second what, uh, Heather Brown said about the additional hate symbols. Because right after this, they're going to be like, all right, let's do the blue line now. Let's do the, don't tread on me now. Well, what's the new Nazi sign? You know, let's just bring the old swastika back. You know, they haven't talked about that one specifically. In Germany, it's banned. Okay. And that works out pretty well, um, in terms of keeping it out of public space. Um, and like Marietta said, um, I'm sorry, I didn't really hear the pronunciation, but uh, it's, there should be an anti-racism, racism curriculum to prevent this. Um, and if, if we don't come together to ban the other hate symbols, they're going to rally behind those. It's going to be the same attitude. And it's not even really the kids, it's whoever is sort of influencing them. Like, okay, put this flag on and put that flag on and they're just, it's going to be the same fear behind the symbol, you know? But if, if, if you don't make it more broad, if it's just a Confederate flag, then we're just going to be, it's going to be a waste of time, you know, we're going to be back here every time they change the symbol. So yeah, um, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you very much, Jose, for your comments this evening. The next person whose hand is raised is Anthony Peck. Anthony, you can go ahead and unmute and, um, let us know your name and where you live.
Thank you. Anthony Peck, Northampton, Massachusetts. I have a kid in high school and another child at Jackson Street. Um, and I want to thank the school committee for taking up this issue and also to echo, uh, statements by, um, previous speakers like Heather Brown and Jose Adostra. Hopefully I'm saying your name correctly, um, about expanding the ban to include other symbols. And just to highlight, I think Jose's point that banning a single symbol would likely result in substitution where another symbol is used in its place. Um, and I think under the, um, and I think a lawyer could probably speak this better than I, but I would just point out that under the Tinker standard for which, uh, schools can regulate speech related to, um, hate symbols, which was a Supreme Court decision, I think from the sixties. It's not just, uh, schools are allowed to, to, to put regulation on things, not based on the past, but also on reasonable forecasts of what might happen. So I think if you think about the, the possible substitution of one hate symbol for another, say, say the swastika, for example. I think you all could reasonably forecast that would cause substantial disruption to the educational process, which gives you the power to also regulate that form of speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Erica Karen. Erica, if you could, uh, uh, unmute and, um, and just let us know who you are and where you live.
Hi, uh, my name is Erica Karen. I teach at JFK and I am a resident of Hatfield. I just want to, I want to speak because I am from a surprisingly conservative part of southeastern Massachusetts. And the elementary school that I attended recently banned the peace flag because it was deemed too political. So imagine my surprise working in Northampton where the pride flag is waved proudly everywhere. That the peace flag was too political for this conservative, very white area of southeastern Massachusetts. And I said, thank God, I work in such an area where we are open to these conversations and cue this, you know, JFK White Student Union Confederate flag issue. Um, I one hundred percent back Desmond Caldwell and his beautiful statement regarding the Confederate flag. This should be a no-brainer. Uh, I'm from a very conservative part of the state where the peace flag was banned and I never saw the Confederate flag. Ever. At, anywhere in school, it was not even a thing. It was not even a, like, like a, like a, let's, you know, be revolutionaries and use it. It was not a thing. And, um, I second everything that Maritha Wallace, Heather Brown and Jose and Anthony have said tonight, but especially Maritha, because, um, she comes here every single time. There is an issue regarding any sort of prejudice to racism or ableism or LGBTQ issue. And it's not on her. It shouldn't have to be on her as, uh, as a, as a person of color to have to come in and, and fight every single time. So I want her to know I have her back and that this should be a no-brainer and it should be a no-brainer to add any hate symbol, because any hate symbol, including the swastika and others, will be disruptive to learning. One hundred percent will be disruptive to learning. And if some districts can, if some districts can ban the peace flag of all things, which is a project out in southeastern Mass where it is essentially the pride flag with the word peace on it for anyone who doesn't know. It's very troubling to me that that can get banned, but not the blue, not the thin blue line, not a swastika. Um, and maybe the Confederate flag, but not all of them. The peace flag should be the least of our worries. And it is necessary for, for, pardon me, it is here in Northampton. And this will be a statement I would bring to, um, the local school community back home. However, we need to set an example. We need to set an example and other towns are ahead of us and we claim ourselves to be anti-racist and progressive. We are so not. So I implore you to please consider adding language in regarding all hate symbols. And please stop putting this on the back of our people of color in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person whose hand is raised is Allison Spencer Bunch. Allison, if you can unmute and, um, let us know your name and where you're from.
So I am Allison Spencer Bunch. I live in Ward Five and I am a teacher at JFK Middle School. And I want to echo the requests coming from other people tonight to adopt this ban in a way that explicitly bans the Confederate flag, but also bans other hate symbols. And I also want to echo the idea that this is one immediate thing we need to do. That's only a very small piece of what we need to do and specifically to ask the school committee and the superintendent to figure out how to carve out time for frequent mandatory work for all staff to be working on their own, like racial biases and anti-racism and also to work on that curriculum. Because without mandatory time and mandatory resources for like not monthly sessions, but you know, really frequent work, it winds up being just the people who opt in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Allison, are you still there? Just?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I was still there. I just was done talking and nervously.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I just, I'm sorry. I thought maybe your, your audio had cut out. I apologize. Thank you so much for your comments. The next person who has their hand raised is Kristin Eldy. Hope I didn't get that last name correct. Kristin, if you can unmute and let us know your name and where you live.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm Kristin Eldy. Parent of a lead second grader and a member of the local racial equity and learning group, or REAL. Um, I'm bummed that I missed. It sounds like public comment started earlier than I thought. So I missed early comments and I look forward to going back and listening. But yes, I, from just listening to the last couple of comments, um, and certainly being, um, part of the conversation in recent weeks. And, and before that, um, I joined many across our district who are in support of a ban of the Confederate flag and other hate symbols. Uh, as others, including NPS students, have spoken and written about, uh, the flag is a symbol of white supremacy and hate. And displaying it creates unsafe environments for our students, staff and teachers. It needs to go and I urge school committee members to do right by our school community and enact a ban. I also, as others have also just in the last five minutes have spoken to, yeah, the importance of emphasizing that the work doesn't end here or with challenging other overt acts of white supremacy and hate. Because of course, the deeper issue and one that has all sorts of negative implications for students and community members of color is the racism that is baked into our everyday practices at NPS. The racism that may be less explicit, uh, meaning for one, that it's not as easily seen by white people, but is still harmful. The racism that is evident in our district's low representation of teachers and administrators of color. Curriculum that fails to adequately represent the experiences and perspectives of people of color. Disciplinary practices that have a greater negative impact on students of color than our white students and the under-representation of students of color in college prep courses and, and the list goes on and on. So as is true throughout our country, Northampton Public Schools reflect racism in many forms. And there's so much that we, that we need to do and that we can do together as a district to change the narrative for, for our collective good. So yes, let's absolutely ban the flag and, and other hate symbols and then let's keep going. That, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate them. So the, um, I do not see anyone else who has their hand raised, um, at this time. So if there is no one else, um, lined up for public comment, I will close the public comment period. And we will move on into the next item on the agenda, um, which is item eleven. And it is a scheduled vote on this, on the aforementioned, um, policy banning the Confederate flag, uh, in the Northampton Public Schools. And I believe we have our attorney, uh, Leila Taylor, who's going to be joining us here this evening, who has done significant research and in developing, um, helping us develop the policy, including researching case law and, um, the case law that was even referenced this evening. So, um, is Leila, are you on the line? Has Leila joined us yet?
I don't, I don't see her. I believe she's on her way, but she's not here yet.
Okay, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So, um, okay, so why don't we, um, let's see. What's that again?
She just texted me saying she's logging on.
Okay, great. Remember Levy, you have your hand raised, but, um,
I was going to make a motion, but I'll wait for Leila.
Okay, I think that'd be good. Okay, I have an iPhone coming in. So I've been, um, okay, we're just waiting for Attorney Taylor to log into Zoom. Give her a moment. Okay, we're. Okay, here comes Attorney Taylor in the waiting room, so we'll let her in. So Leila, are you with us this evening?
I am. I am so sorry. I.
No problem. We're, we're actually, um, um, we are actually ahead of schedule, which I may come as a shock to you because we're typically not, but, uh, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. And so we've now moved to the area on the agenda, uh, where there is a vote, um, scheduled and it is to ban a Confederate flag and there is a proposed, uh, policy on, uh, on the agenda. And, um, I'll, I'll just read it quickly into the record. Given the documented history of substantial disruption to the learning environment in the Northampton Public Schools caused by displays of the Confederate flag, including the negative impact to the health and safety of students who have a right to equally access the learning environment and have credibly reported feeling unsafe when it is displayed and the ongoing disruptions to the learning environment that is reasonably anticipated to continue by its display. Neither student staff nor visitors to the school shell at school, whether in person or online, on school property or at school-sponsored activities, display or transmit images of the Confederate flag in any medium, including clothing, jewelry, posters, stickers, flyers or buttons. Images and symbols covered by this policy are permissible in library or other approved learning materials or in a classroom setting, e.g. a history class, discussion of the Civil War or the Civil Rights Movement as part of a learning assignment supervised by a teacher. So that is the policy that's been brought forward. I know you've researched it extensively and worked with various members on it. Um, and I wanted to just, um, well, actually, uh, do we want to put it on the floor first and then we'll have you discuss it? So does someone wish to put it on the floor? Remember Levy, you, you had your hand raised earlier. I, I would, and remember Fallon has her hand raised as well. Remember Levy?
Yeah, I, um, I would put a motion to put this on to the floor, but I also have a friendly amendment that maybe I would like to offer after we hear from, from.
So can I ask, as you make that motion, could you also make it a motion to suspend our rules and?
I think those have to be separate because the motion to suspend the rules needs to be a two-thirds vote, whereas a motion to pass that would need to, that does just needs to be a simple majority.
Let's, let's test it and see. So I think you could make a motion to, to suspend rules and put this on the floor. Um, I'm willing to bet it's going to get a two-thirds vote. So I don't know, just call me crazy. So we just, because we typically take two readings on these and because we typically refer them to, um, rules and policy, we would want to just suspend our rules and put this on the floor for a vote.
Okay, so I make a motion to put this on the floor and suspend our rules. And then I would like to say something after.
You will certainly have that opportunity. Okay, um, so is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so, um, the motion's been made and seconded. So, uh, let's turn to you, Leila, now and ask you to, um, give us, uh, your overview as our attorney of the, um, of this particular policy and why you believe that, um, the school committee can move forward in adopting it.
We, Mayor, don't we have to vote though to suspend the rule?
Well, okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and separate those. Our rules and policy, uh, person is being persistent, so.
Well, I'm sorry, Leila is, Leila is also nodding her head. I.
That's fine, that's fine. Um, so go ahead. I'm going to ask Member Levy to then withdraw your motion to approve. And I'm going to ask, um, uh, well, I guess we have to suspend the rules first and then you can make your motion. So Member Fallon's going to make the motion to suspend the rules and then we're going to vote on it. And then you can make the motion to put it back on the floor.
Okay, so I would move to, uh, the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
I have a question. Just, sorry.
Sure.
Help me with my ignorance. What are we, what rule are we suspending exactly?
Typically, um, under our rules, rules and policies have to, uh, take two readings. So voting on it on a first reading would not normally happen. Also, we would send it to a committee, uh, for study, um, under our rules. So those are the two. So we're basically suspending our rules to allow that.
I see Kaya's hand, but not a.
Remember Goldman?
Sorry, I don't have a blue hand. Does Member Levy need to retract her motion first?
She did. Yeah, she did.
Oh, she did. Good, thank you.
Okay, um, so there's been a motion made and seconded, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on that.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
And Member Kaufman?
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so the rules are suspended and now your motion would be in order, Member Levy.
Great. I move to put this on the floor and hear from Leila and then have something else to add.
You will definitely have the right to speak and to amend and to do all those things. So you don't have to preface your motion that way. You will be guaranteed that right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded and now I'll turn to Attorney Taylor.
So, before I get into the law, which is why I'm here to talk, I do want to just say to the school committee, to the administration, to the staff, to the community members who've taken up this issue. I am always amazed, just amazed at the commitment this community has to, to do and doing what's right for kids and, and moving the needle. And it sometimes moves slower than we want to for social justice and equity. So I just want to put that out there. I'm always very proud to work with you folks. You do an amazing job. So I was asked to weigh on a pretty heavy constitutional law issue that has to do with freedom of speech. It has to do with freedom of speech both at the federal level, right, the First Amendment. We have the state constitution, but it also has to do with the state statute that's been on the books for a very long time. There's very little case law around. And, and you had members during public comment that very eloquently spoke about Tinker in federal law. I, I think, you know, those, what was said was, was adequate. What I would also say is that federal law has not addressed this hish issue head-on since Tinker at, at the Supreme Court level, certainly not a constitutional flag ban. And so then we look at the appeals courts throughout this country, which have taken, you know, have, have looked at this in various ways. And what they've typically found is that when there is a history in a school of a disruption, an actual disruption, right? Then they'll entertain Confederate flag bans. And often these aren't actually universal bans. They may arise out of a situation where a kid was, a, a student was asked to flip a T-shirt, you know, inside out so they would no longer display a symbol. Or they rose out of discipline or, or, or some other action that's taken. So they're typically not these kinds of policies. And if they are these kinds of policies, they're, they're enacted after a long history in the, in the school of, of facts that support racial tensions. At the state level, we have a statute, Mass General Laws, Chapter seventy-one eighty-two. And I'm gonna read it because it's, it's, it's interesting. It says, "The right of students to freedom of expression in the public school, so specifically the public schools of the Commonwealth shall not be abridged, shall not be abridged, provided that such right shall not cause any disruption or disorder within the school. Freedom of expression shall include without limitation the rights and responsibilities of students collectively and individually to express their views through speech and symbols, to write, publish, and disseminate their views, to assemble peaceably during regular school schedule hours for the purpose of expressing their opinions." There's been one case in Massachusetts interpreting this statute. And in that case, which was in nineteen ninety-six, which was a long time ago, public sentiment was very different. Unfortunately, it was different, but it was different. And it wasn't about a Confederate flag, that case. And the SJC, which is our Supreme Court here in Massachusetts, said, you know what? There has to be actual disorder or disruption. You can't, you can't say, oh, you know, we're gonna look out into the world and, and, you know, and, you know, ban something if we don't know it's gonna cause a disruption. And so what you're faced with here is sort of a unique thing. There's been an actual disruption in this school, absolutely, right? The last few months at JFK have, have shown that. You've got kids that have expressed, you know, that, that they feel unsafe by this display and legitimately so. You also have some courts that have talked in what's called dicta. They haven't decided on this issue. But they have suggested, and Tinker actually suggests this, that there is a right for people to be left alone to be safe when they go to school, right? And so I, I think what I've heard this community talk about, at least in the conversations I've had, and from what I've seen as this, this recent situation with the unfortunate display of the Confederate flag in the schools, is that, you know, you've got kids who are expressing that, listen, this is impacting our health and safety. It's impacting their health and safety. And there's a question about whether moving forward, is this, is, does this hate, is this hate symbol so fraught that it, it inherently disrupts the learning environment? And that's what I'm hearing from this school committee. The courts have not addressed this head-on. I will be very honest with all of you. But this is, you're, you're acting in good faith and, and you know, it is a absolutely reasonable basis to move forward with this, based on these terms. And I know that there's been some discussions about a broader policy. I think you need to do a little bit more fact development in your policy and rule. In, in your policy and rule committee. But I don't think it's out of the question. I think, you know, your, your, the school is, is looking to move something forward that could be tremendous for the kids in this district. So that's all I have to say. I don't know if there are any questions.
Are there any questions just for Attorney Taylor? I know you have an amendment you want to make, Member Levy. Do you have any questions for, or did you want to ask other people if they can, if they would like to add? Member Gold, did you have a question? Member Seraphie Cox, did you have a question?
No, I have a friendly amendment, hopefully, to Member Levy's motion.
Okay, so before we get into the friendly amendments, I just want to see if there's any questions. Member Kaufman, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. Attorney Taylor, can you just expand a little bit on your comment about a more expansive, a more expansive procedure? What, what, what's behind that? What, what's your, what, what's your concerns and why are you recommending that?
So, really, a, a policy that essentially is a ban right here, right now, right? You, you absolutely have disorder, disruption that's been caused by the Confederate flag in your school, right? There's, there's no doubt about that. And so to move forward with a Confederate flag ban, you have a really solidly, I think, the, the, the more solid legal basis to move forward with that because you've had an actual disruption. The space on other, bands of other hate symbols, I have not heard, I imagine, right, I imagine sitting here that if a student is exposed to somebody wearing a swastika or another hate symbol, right? That it's gonna, for some students, it is going to make them feel unsafe, right? I, I can sit here today and say, you know, my, my educated guess is yes, that would do so. But you haven't had an actual disruption in the school, right? And so what I would like to see on, i- if, if you're going to pursue a larger ban is to have in the Rules and Policy Committee, some, you know, experts. Some people come in to sort of speak to that Rules and Policy Committee about the impact of certain types of symbols, right? Certain types of speech on the, you know, on students' ability to learn, right? I, I think that would be a very important record to develop in moving forward with that policy. I think it would be important for the school committee to hear that in order to develop the kind of policy that they're looking for. That, that's really where that's coming from.
Okay, is there anything else? I mean, I, so it's document, it's documenting that it has had an adverse impact on student learning, feeling of safety and stuff. I think that's very clear. Thank you. Was there any other concerns that if this did go to, if a broader perspective was addressed, are there anything else that reaches your level of, that is a high level of concern for you? Does it have to, numbers of kids, costs involved?
But, no, I mean, I, in terms of, if, if, if there's ever litigation, there's cost. But in terms of cost of, of, of really, you know, developing a, a more comprehensive policy, I, I don't have concerns. It, it really is just developing that record. I, I, you know, I'd like you to be able to develop that record and have a policy that has a, you know, some good faith legal basis for moving forward and, and has some meat on it. I don't want to see those incidents actually happen at the school, right?
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Go back up to the top of the list now. I do want to say I, I, the order got a little jumbled because I took down Member Gold's hand inadvertently. And so he actually put it back up again, but he, he was after Member Levy, but I, but he, he got dropped below, so I want to respect that. So I'll go to Member Levy first, then Member Gold, then to Member Seraphie Cox.
Thanks. So I want to really thank Leila. She's been really, really helpful these last few weeks in, in helping me better understand this. And what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is propose a sort of two-part to this, to this, I guess what I've already proposed, which is to say that, so I think freedom of speech is essential to creating a learning environment where all students can learn. And yet, speech that is reasonably expected to be divisive, demeaning, or offensive to any group will disrupt that learning environment. This includes and goes beyond the Confederate flag in my mind. I've been working with Superintendent Provost and Leila on language for a new policy that would prohibit writing symbols and images associated with intimidation, violence, or violent groups which advocate racial, ethnic, or religious prejudice, such as items that promote intolerance or confrontation, including the Confederate flag or swastika, or that denigrate others on the basis of a protected class. So I'd like to have a two-part motion, really. One is I move that we pass this proposed policy to ban the Confederate flag now. And I'd like to refer my proposed policy to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee to do that fact development that Leila referred to. Mayor Narcoitz, you're muted.
That's actually on our agenda. That's the next item on the agenda, is a vote to refer a potential hate speech policy. Not necessarily, but just refer the idea of developing a policy. So that's, you, you certainly, we don't have your particular policy on the agenda, but certainly it'll move to rules and policy where your policy and other policy ideas can be discussed. So, just to back up.
Admiral, that I think it's really important in this conversation about banning the flag, that it be clear that, that I, I think it's necessary to do both. And so in thinking about banning the flag, I, I would only vote yes to ban the flag if we are also moving to, to go beyond that and to do the like work that Leila is, is referring to. So that's why I think it's really important that be, it be associated with this vote as well.
So, um, okay, so then you, but, so you're, you're not actually amending the motion. You're saying you want the vote to be to adopt this policy, but then to direct the Rules and Policy Subcommittee to work on a broader hate speech policy?
Correct. And I'm not sure I would call it hate speech, but yeah, that is what I'm saying.
Well, I'm just referring to what we had on the agenda. So you don't want to wait until we vote on this and then take a second vote. You would like the vote to be together.
Correct. In my mind, they are, they are related enough that it would impact my vote on this particular policy.
Okay, um, so that's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Member Voss has seconded that motion. Attorney Taylor, do you have any thoughts or concerns about that? We're essentially, I mean, I, I view it as we're sort of combining two agenda items in one vote.
Well, it's two agenda items, but I mean, you're basically vote, yeah. I mean, you're voting for two things in one vote. I don't think it's prohibited, you know?
Okay.
You can certainly do it.
I tried unsuccessfully moments ago to do it, but it didn't work out. But, yeah, go ahead.
Say, if it's, if it, if it's simpler to everybody else to, to, to vote separately, we can do that. What I'm trying to articulate is that I would not vote to ban the flag alone. I would only vote to ban the flag if we are also doing this, this additional work. And so that's why I'm putting them together. But if, if what you're saying is that overcomplicates things, just do it separately. I suppose I'm open to that. But I see their hand, so I will stop.
Okay, um, Member Seraphie Cox, did you have an, an amendment to that amendment or do you have a comment or about that?
It's a very minor amendment to change the word teacher to the word educator.
Okay. So, uh, let us see where we are here. So which line is that in? I'm just trying to find it here. Is that in?
I think it's in the last line.
The last word.
Okay, learning assignment supervised by an educator. So a teacher would turn to an educator. Okay.
Correct.
Is there a second on that amendment?
I offered it as a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment? Would you accept it as a friendly amendment, the maker of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so that we'll dispense with a vote on that. And now my question is, do you, well, let me just see if there's other questions about the amendment. Member Gold, do you have an amendment or a question?
I have a, I don't have a question about Member Seraphie Cox's amendment, if that's what you mean.
That's been accepted by as a friendly amendment to it.
Okay, I have a, I have a different amendment I'd like to offer.
Okay.
That was, my hand was up.
Okay, um, I believe you could make an amendment right now to the amendment.
Which to, so are we, are we, I'm sorry, this is confusing for me. Are we discussing Member Levy's amendment to bring them?
We're discussing the motion. Member Levy changed her own motion and that was right, she changed her own motion, so we're, we're discussing that motion. Isn't that right, Mayor?
Yes, she's, she did change her motion, although not the substance of it, other than to say she wanted to combine the two votes into one. Though I did hear her say that she might be amenable to separating them as they are listed on the agenda. But I don't know how strongly you feel about that. Member Levy?
I'm happy to hear what other folks have to say.
Okay. But I guess we, um, so, um, but I guess the, the amendment you're making is that those two things be combined. So I think before we hear from you, you and your, what sounds like yours is a different type of amendment, we should dispense with this amendment and find out where we are on it before we go back to making additional sub amendments. So do other people have thoughts on whether these two items should be combined or whether, or whether we can vote in the order as they're listed on the agenda? Member Voss, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I put my hand up directly about this. And the reason I seconded it and supported it is it feels this way to me that it really is a package deal and the reason being something terrible happened and we're addressing it as quickly as we can, that is the Confederate flag. And suspending our rules and doing that quickly, but it's a much broader issue. And what we're hearing from Attorney Taylor is there needs to be some more work done on it and some thought put in to the bigger picture. We heard from many educators in public comment tonight about, well, if you just ban the flag, well, then we're gonna see the tread on me flag come and other things come. And so I, I think. And so I think it really sends a message, if you put these two things together, that the committee is taking seriously the entire, the entire issue and acknowledging it's not going to be fixed tonight, but it's, we have to address it as holistically as possible. And we're taking the first step we're capable of taking tonight. So that's why I'm really supporting what Member Levy proposed.
Member Fallon, you have your hand up.
Thanks. So yeah, I would concur with Member Voss and Member Levy as far as addressing this in one. I don't see that there's a problem with it. And I think that it makes sense in that it does send a message that we're addressing the emergency portion of it this evening and then sending for review the question of a larger, more extensive policy. While I have the floor, though, can I make an amendment that's not, I don't think remotely contentious? That's unrelated, but it's just, we haven't named this policy or given it its code. So while we keep referring to this policy, we typically adopt policies that are named and coded. And I have it for you. So can I just enter that into the record?
I believe, I suspect Member Levy would accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yes, I will accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, so can we, and I did run this by Attorney Taylor, so, and Dr. Provost. So we would cross-reference this policy as, under both the student section of the policies and the staff. So it would be policy J I C F C slash G B I A. And it would be called prohibition on the display of Confederate flag symbol at school, on school property, and at school-sponsored events. And I can email the school committee clerk that information.
And you accept that friendly amendment, Member Levy? Okay, so then let's vote on Member Levy's amendment, which is to combine the adoption of the Confederate flag with the referral of a potential expanded policy to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. And I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Oh, Member Levy?
Sorry, I do, I just, it seemed like Member Gold maybe had something to add. I just wanted to circle back.
He has a separate amendment he wants to make. So once this is all, once your amendment is complete, then we will have to vote on it. So there'll still be opportunities to amend it.
Thanks.
So I just, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on Member Levy's amendment.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narquist?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
And Member Voss?
Yes.
Vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so now we're back to the, now we're back to the main motion as it's been amended. And Member Gold, you had your hand up earlier with a potential amendment?
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to offer an amendment to the language of the, by adding an additional sentence to the language of this policy. And I'll just briefly explain it so that you understand why I'm adding this. I strongly support ensuring that our students and teachers are provided a safe learning environment, free of images and symbols that have history associated with racism, antisemitism, homophobia, and other belief systems that have been used to attack, intimidate, marginalize, and inhumanly treat any group within our community. I think this policy is an important first step towards ensuring a safe learning environment and hope we soon find a way to expand this beyond just one of these images and symbols. I'm glad we actually just did that. As important as it is to ensure that these images do not have a place in our schools, schools have a primary responsibility to educate our students. And so it's equally important that we consistently educate our students and staff about this policy. With this in mind, I would like to make an amendment to add the following sentence. And it would be this. Annually, at the beginning of each school year and intermittently throughout the year, all schools will inform and educate all students about this policy and the reasoning for it. So that's the sentence, and I could share it on the screen if that's helpful. Last thing I'll say is that while I understand the intentions within this amendment that I'm offering can be included in other district policies or documents. As a teacher, I've learned that it's critically important when putting an end to a behavior to at the same time educate and continue to educate as to why such an action is taken and to hopefully change the behavior for the long run. By including this amendment, we can ensure that we are banning and educating within the same policy. Lastly, I checked to ensure that this was permissible with Superintendent Provost and Attorney Taylor, and they did say that it was.
Okay, so there's been a motion made. Is there a second on the motion to amend?
Or is it friendly?
Or is it a friendly amendment that the maker could accept?
I can accept it as a friendly amendment. No, that's not for me. That's not for me.
That would be for Member Levy, if Member Levy was so inclined.
I can accept it as a friendly amendment as long as there's no, like, curricular issue when we're saying that now we're saying teachers must teach about this. I completely appreciate the background and your rationale, Member Gold, and in full agreement with it. Just want to make sure there's no reason why having that language in the policy would be problematic.
Just if I may weigh in on that. So the first days of school every year are a list, a litany of required trainings and statements that schools need to make and educate staff. And I don't see why this would be any different.
Okay, great. So if that's the case, I'm happy to accept it as a friendly amendment.
Okay, so thank you, Member Gold. So that will be added. And you can share that with, with Clark if you haven't already, just so that it can be added. Okay, are there any other, any other amendments or discussion of this policy before us this evening? Okay, hearing none, I will then ask the clerk to call the roll on this vote to both enact this ban on the Confederate flag, but also to refer a more expanded policy to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee for, for hearing and review.
Mayor Narquist?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
And Member Gold?
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so the, so the vote of the school committee is unanimous and the policy is enacted and the referral is made to the Rules and Policy Committee simultaneously to study a more expanded policy around these issues. So the next item on the agenda is, flipping my page here, is an executive session that is for the purposes of discussing strategy with regard.
Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that we are supposed to have a discussion of the budget book.
Yeah, that's a big one to skip over. Sorry about that. Got a little truncated down there at the bottom of my page when I printed it. So yes, we do have this little thing called the presentation and discussion of the FY22 budget book. Our business administrator, Kami Lamica, has been preparing that. Obviously, the superintendent has a message as well, and so I'll turn it over to them.
I have no desire to read the message into the record. I would just ask everyone to take a look at it when they get the book.
Excellent. So I'll turn it over to Kami then to just give us a quick overview of what it is that we have received in electronic format. And obviously, just for the public, this is literally, in non-Zoom times, literally, we would be handed out these big binders and be given a quick glance through the table of contents. But we do have a special meeting scheduled at the end of the month for the purpose of actually going through the budget and hearing comment on the budget, et cetera. So Kami, take it away.
So electronically, this afternoon, you did receive the electronic version of what normally is our budget binder. That includes a lot of information. It's also been placed on our school's website. If anybody does want an actual hard copy of it, please let me know. We did print off some actual ones as well, so if you like paper and books and you would rather have one of those, just please let Annie know or let me know, and we will get you that, because sometimes it's easier, it's the number of pages. So, you know, to print it out at your house might be a little bit more difficult. And we do have some of those made. I'm just going to highlight maybe about 20 quick pages, just, and I'm just going to point things out for you. I'll let you go through it at your leisure, ask any questions. And then in the meantime, you can send questions to us. We'll answer some things along the way. And then we will have our next meeting on the 25th to get in great detail, because I know the hour's late. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things for you. I'm going to share my screen, if I can do this, if it works. Sorry, the cover goes one way, but we got the rest of it to all go the other way. So we have the superintendent's message. The first section is the budget overview. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things for you.
Yeah, Kami, do you think you're?
Can I interrupt you? If you think you're screen sharing, you're not.
Okay, that's good. Let me go back to this one again. Now is it there? Perfect, okay.
There you go.
Then click one more button, I'm afraid. All right, so for the 22 budget, we are looking at a one point, just under $1.3 million increase, which is a 4.04% increase in our budget over this year. This is strictly our operating budget. There are additional funds that support the school operations, which I'll get into in a minute. And I'm just going to highlight some of the pages. I'm not going to go in great detail. If you have a question, please stop me. I'm just trying to abbreviate it, but give you information at the same time. So on this page, we divide up what we've spent in the past, what we plan to pay for out of the budget, and what we pay for out of other funding sources by schools. Department of Education requires us to report things by site, by school site and different program areas. So that's why we record it this way. This page also, if you take a look at the fiscal '22 other funding column, that's all of our grants and revolving accounts. So anything that we have, private grants, state grants, federal grants, revolving accounts, which include circuit breaker, school choice, transportation revolving, our food service operations, that's all included in this column here. We tried to give a couple. Also, some people have a better time seeing it visually. So we take a look at it, and that way you can see proportionally what areas the funds are being spent on, whether they are just the operating budget, or whether it includes all of the cost centers and all the funding sources. We also do it with the special education costs included as part of each school site, because we have a number of ways special education operations can be by itself, or it can also be part of the school's budget. So we've tried to show it both ways for you. One of the important pages here is a summary of all the funds that we're projecting for next year. So the local appropriation is our operating budget, which the city gives the appropriation amount to us. The school choice, the circuit breaker, which is special education reimbursements from the state, the food service operations, the athletic revolving accounts, the transportation revolving, which comes from the fees that students pay for their bus passes, and any grants and other revolving accounts that we've mentioned before. And just for your information, any of the grants that we have listed here are our normal grant funding sources. This does not include any relief fund for COVID included in this. This is just our regular operations in this. I do have a separate page for the COVID relief that I will get to in a minute. We have it, Department of Ed wants to categorize all the expenses in certain categories. So that's when we could take a look at it this way. If you could take a look at this, when we look at student instruction, that constitutes 76% of our operating budget, and that's strictly our operating budget from the city. And if, on the next page, when we take a look at major areas, and this includes all of our funding sources, the personnel costs alone are over 81% of our, all of our costs that we have for funding sources for our school operations. One of the other pages that we try to highlight the things that have happened is, so since we passed the budget last April, there have been a number of changes that have happened throughout the year. This year is a little bit more extensive. But these are changes that happen during the year based on either student needs, changes in personnel that happen. So we highlight what's happened since April for this current year. And then we also, on the bottom part, 22 new, would be something that we're proposing to include new in next year's budget that is not operating at the moment. The top portion, I did want to just say, because this is a very different year, a lot of the things that we've maybe had to have put in place temporarily this year with COVID relief money in the top part here is not included here as a change, because it was temporary, and that's how we've written it at the moment. So any permanent changes that we have, and I hate to say permanent, but nontemporary, are included on the top part of that staffing page. We are actually proposing to put a number of ESPs positions in place for next year. So that's listed here. The superintendent's First View Budget packet is included as a section in the book. And I'm just going to go through that piece of it, because we've seen, and it's there for you to refer back to. This is one of the pages I did want to mention. This was part of the First View Budget, the pandemic relief funds of the funds that we were granted and what period of time they were looking to cover. So when we get down to the other page of what we're proposing to spend out of COVID relief for next year, this is also a good reference of what we had to work with to begin with. I'm just going to scoot down to the end, get to one of the school sections here. There we go. So each school has its own section in the book. Each administrator has written what we call a profile, so they can tell you things that have happened over the course of the year, things that their school's experiencing, what they're dealing with, and things that they're looking for goals to do for next year, or challenges they may have, how they're trying to address them. So I would encourage each one of you to take a look at and read some of those, all of, actually, all of the profiles, because they give you a lot of good information for each one of the schools. In each school section, there's a page that's the FTEs, so all the full-time equivalents for all the staff in that building. They give you what's budgeted for this year, what it's currently operating at right now, because there are some changes that I notified earlier in the book, and also what we're proposing for next year. Also, for the 22 notes, you'll see that there's a couple of items identified in the right-hand column if any changes are happening, so you can quickly identify that those would be the change for next year. The next pages are money. I'm just going to highlight one piece here. So the top part of this would be regular education. And then we include the special education services within that school are highlighted for the full-time equivalents. And we've done the same thing with the dollars. The regular education is in the beginning. And then we include it with the special education included as the bottom as well. So you can see FTEs and dollar amounts. Each school has its own section identified the exact same way. So I'm going to skip through each one of those. And. So one thing I did want to mention is the athletic department budget. Last year, during some of our budget reduction meetings, we looked at and utilized $20,000 of the revolving account balance to fund the current operations. So one of the things that I've done in the budget for this year is we've restored that $20,000 because we're not taking it out of the balance anymore. So one of the funding sources you'll see when you get down to that is where the use of the refund revolving fund balance is reduced back to its normal. We had bumped it up for $20,000 more for this current year that we're operating in. So next year is back to its normal funding level that we usually use. There's a lot of information there as well for athletic program. Student services is the next section. And I did want to highlight that some of the things that were included in this, which is a little bit different for student services. It also includes the early childhood, the English language learners, as well as the family and student engagement coordinator section, the health services, the homeless and foster care, as well as the special education. So that all comes under the special student service category. So I just wanted to point that out to you so you'll know where to look for that. In section 13 has all the grants and revolving accounts. So this is anything that's in addition to our operating budget. And I'm trying not to go too fast, but I'm trying to highlight pieces for you. All right. So the grants are revolving. There's a number of different worksheets in here. So it tells you what we have currently for this year's grants. On this page, we have included some of the COVID relief, emergency relief funds that we've had, just so you'll have those amounts identified here as well. Just for identification purposes for amounts. It also includes the grant descriptions we have and what they're intended for and what they mean when you see some of the names. All the revolving accounts we have. So by statute, we're allowed to have a number of revolving accounts for an intended purpose. So revenue goes directly into that revolving account and only expenses related to that activity can be charged to that. And that balance can continue from year to year. Unlike our budget that on June 30th, it's zero or goes back to the city. So there's a number of those and more of the kind of the athletic, the food service, the school choice. Those are probably in circuit breaker, the largest circuit, the largest revolving accounts that we usually operate with. There's some detail about there. The last page of this section, I'm just going to point out. So I know a number of you had asked about it. So two things. So let me stop at the school choice one. So school choice is an important part of our budget planning. It's always been used as our stabilization for the school department. And this is one of those things that for the students that we take in district, we get a certain amount of money. We're able to put that money into this account and able to spend it for operations. It's been our stabilization piece. It's helped us through the budget. And when we get to the end of the year, we're able to use a little bit less or more of it, depending on where we need to be at the end of the year. Usually if we have some funds in our operating budget, we've been able to take some of our things, our expenses charged to school choice and charge them to the budget, which helps maintain that balance. At the moment, based on the expenditures for 22 and the estimate for 23 and the estimated revenue coming in for 22 and 23, 23 will be the year that will be the last year you'll have school choice revolving balance in there. So that's an important thing to look at. We knew at a point it was going to run out and that was the whole part of the stabilization. And I want to bring that to the school committee's attention. So they are aware of it. That was always the plan. But we are trying to coincide that at the same time with grant funding for COVID relief ending in fiscal 23 as well. So we all need to take a look at all of it and plan it well. So we don't have a large drop in financial resources at the after the end of fiscal 23. So school choice page is one of them.
I'm sorry to interrupt Kami. Is it okay to ask a question? Or if it's not mayor or anyone like I won't ask, but
That's fine. If you I think Kami said if you ran into a question along the way, ask it. So go.
Can you just, is it with the school choice? Is it because there was less school choice this year? Like, can you repeat? Why did it run out? I'm missing that. Sorry.
Okay. So it's not a matter of running out. We generally bring in, and I can bring up another sheet. We generally bring in about $1.3 million each year. But we, as you can see from this report from fiscal 19 up, we keep using more than we're bringing in. And that has been going on for a period of time. In the beginning, we weren't using it as much for expenditures to balance the budget. And we were bringing in more money. So the balance accumulated. So now we're using more of the balance. We're not bringing in as much revenue as what we're using. So at some point it's going to run out. And that's what we've always kept an eye out, you know, with a five-year projection of when is it anticipated to run out? And at the moment, we're looking at fiscal 23 is when it's going to run out.
And does the number of school choice kids choicing in impact? It must impact that, right?
It does. It makes it whether it goes a little bit faster, a little bit slower. And at the moment, our numbers are down a little bit, nothing drastic, maybe about 10 students. But it's down. You know, so we it's definitely, it's a balance of you don't want too many kids in the school because they need more resources. But at the same time, it's the revenue coming in.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks.
Circuit breaker is a special education. This is the state provides funding for us for high-cost, high-need students. They reimburse us a certain percentage over a certain dollar amount. So the numbers you're seeing here are based on actual reimbursement for the actual cost for the students the previous year. And that's what we have available. So this number that we're going to use in 22 is the number we actually received in 21 so that we know we have that money in there. And that's what we have. And it gives you a history of the circuit breaker revenues. Transportation revolving, we also take in the fees, we pay some expenses, we pay part of our bus contract out of there as well as we take a portion of it along with applying for capital money and replace a bus every year is what we've been trying to do. So that way we don't have buses that are more than five years old at a given time if we can. So that's doing okay.
Kami, may I ask a question? Is it? I haven't obviously looked at this yet. Are we replacing a bus this year? Part B is, are the buses being used less because of COVID? And could we wait a year? Or are we using them for food? And are we using all the buses anyway?
We're using all the buses. This year, we actually did not replace a bus. We actually bought a 70 van instead because we were trying to implement that. So we did not replace a bus this year. So that's why we have it to replace a bus next year to start that cycle back up with our buses.
Kami, I think, sorry, my question is really when we planned for this, we didn't know we would be not running buses for the better part of a year due to COVID. So my question is, are there less miles than we had anticipated a year ago? And is this a place we could save money?
No. So what I'm saying is we have been running our buses because our buses have been transporting the special education students, which have pretty much
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So the one thing I did want to put, this is the last page in section 13, just in case you you want to find an easy way to get to it. This is a number of you had asked if we could clarify and put it in a list of COVID relief funds. So this is what we are projecting. The items that we will spend money on for next year. This is an estimate. I'm going to say it a number of times. It's subject to change. This is what we know today. This is what we're planning today. But with the whole COVID thing, everything changes by tomorrow. We know that there's a learning loss that we need to anticipate supporting for the next two years. So that's why we're looking at spending a portion of it this year. And in Dr. Provost's first view budget, he had a very good chart. I think it's slide 24, if I remember correctly. It actually shows how much we would be using and have available to us over the three years. So this year, fiscal 22, which is next school year, and fiscal 23, which will be the third year. So I just wanted to highlight that piece of it. So this is where we have included all the COVID relief funds for next year that we know of and anticipate right now on this one page. That's not been included in any other budget pages as far as including it. And when you see other funding sources, those are not included in those numbers. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that piece.
Can I ask another question? So you know, and I could email you or you could tell me who to ask, but the question I have about the PPE is is that $350,000 just a placeholder from what we spent this year? Or have we asked the nurses or whoever would weigh in on this, what we need? And as a specific example, I know last summer we spent upwards on $80,000 in gowns, which I would wonder if we've used them also. I completely understand if an accounting hasn't been done of what we have and what we think we need. But if it hasn't, that's just such a big number. And I wonder if it might change and where where we're getting that number from.
To be honest with you, all of these numbers on this page may change. When we looked at the PPE of what we spent, this was not even what we spent. We spent more than that. We know there's going to be some inventory left, but yet again, the time we talked about this, we didn't know we were going to be all in person five days a week from April till June either. So how much burn rate we're going to go through in the next three months are going to be a not sure. So those are those kinds of things that we're trying to take a look at and best estimate we can. I don't think it's far off. It may be a bit off, but I don't think it's far off. It's pretty pricey stuff.
Okay.
And it's larger quantities that we're going through. And the lead time is the piece that we're really challenged with. So that takes care of section 13. Section 14 is all kinds of information with Desi and DOR. If you want any of the statistics for the data about the foundation budget and where all that information comes from.
Kami, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Hi. Can I ask a question? Can you go back to the COVID funding page? For me, please. Do you want me to ask a question now? Or do you want me?
Absolutely.
So I did have a chance to review these documents to this today and it is gorgeous. Thank you again. This is only my second book from you and I'm crying that you won't be preparing this in future years.
Provost might be calling me. Going the same way for a change.
I mean, they're beautiful to me. I don't, I'm not familiar with what these generally look like, but I can read them and I love that about them.
Yep.
Or this book.
Yep.
And this year, just digital. So thank you so much. One thing that I noticed was looking at the sort of the goals set forth in the Dr. Provost Superintendent Provost statement at the beginning of the book was talking about in particular intensive tier two intervention. And so I was sort of tracking that throughout the book. It might be helpful to sort of explain a little bit about what that is because it is quite prominent. And and then when I was looking at each school, also those the descriptions for each school are, you're right, so informative. I was looking at the tiered support specialists for each of the schools and some of them, it's really a drastic change from over the four years that of numbers you provide for some of the schools. Like Bridge and Leeds and JFK, I know it has two and I'm noticing here, I missed this before. There's a tiered specialist here funded by the COVID relief funds. So is that the second? The second specialist for JFK is funded by COVID relief funds, but the other specialists are all part of the operating budget that will continue on. You know, I'm just sort of wondering about those positions and there's these like two, almost three times more in the budget for some of them. You don't have to answer this now, but it's just something that I am curious about and I wanted to highlight.
Yeah. And I don't know if Dr. Provost wanted to jump in about the tier two supports of.
Sure, I'm happy to. That has been one of our primary strategies for making sure that we get help to kids in a timely way. The other option is what we call categorical programs. The most sort of prominent one of those is special education. And it is so much easier, cost-effective and friendlier to students and families to resolve problems when they're small rather than allowing them to get larger. And so that's why we have put so much effort into tier two intervention. It's why in our equity-based goals, we're putting more money into tier two intervention because if kids are behind after COVID, it's not because they have a disability. It's because they've missed so much instruction over the course of this past year. So the way to deal with that is by providing them additional support in general ed, which is what tier two is.
I'm going to keep on going. So 14 has all the Department of Education and Department of Revenue information at the state level regarding the city and the funding that they provide, city and a number of information and charts on that. I'm going to skip down to section 15. There's two things I wanted to highlight for you. So there's a lot of miscellaneous information. So it has our enrollment numbers by school. It has our charter and choice information. So you can see the graphs and numbers of where we stand. It has our school choice sending and receiving. So our students leaving our district, going to other places and also students coming into the district and gives you a history of it as well. So you can see that the trends that are happening. One of the other pieces I did want to highlight for you is also in addition to our budget, other funding sources, which as I mentioned before, are grants and are revolving. In addition, we have the city that pays for a number of expenses that are related to the school department operations. So when you take a look at the school budget of roughly 33 million, we have about another $6 million or so in other funding sources from grants and revolving. And in addition to that, the city pays about another $8 million in expenses on behalf of the school department. So what those items are just to highlight a few would be the health insurance for school department employees, retirement costs for and payroll taxes, workers comp. So those kinds of expenses related to school department employees are in the city's budget. So they're not in the schools. So we try to identify it because when I report to the state, they want to know all the money that's spent. So that's where that number is coming from. It includes the city expenditures that I need to report out as well. So we've highlighted what the costs were last fiscal 20, so last year, and what we anticipate the costs were going to be this year. And the city finance director gives us that each year of what they're going to be. And I think that's the highlights of what I wanted to make sure you were aware of that is included here. There's a lot of information in the book. Depends on how deep you want to dive in for data analysis. If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer, or if you want to take a look at it over the next few weeks, happy to answer questions along the way by email as well. I'm going to stop this sharing.
Okay. Thank you, Kami. So are there any, obviously people are going to have a chance to read through this and digest it. Remember, Seraphie Cox, you have a question?
Yeah, my question isn't so much, well, maybe partially for Kami, but also for for John, excuse me. It's late. I'm calling people by their first names. It's late, I'm calling people by their first names. At the last meeting, we were talking a lot about the needed supports at the high school. And I remembered, you know, the committee really expressing wanting to increase the supports, both for the academic catch-up as well as the social-emotional supports at the high school. So I'm wondering if you can speak to any changes that have happened since our first view around the high school.
Sure, and no worries about calling me John, that certainly works. And also no worries about missing it because it was one sentence in about, I don't know, what are we up to? Five hours of discussion so far? But I did discuss in my superintendent's report that we've actually added about $100,000 worth of services for, mainly for the high school based on recommendations that we got at our first budget discussion. So there are clinical services for the high school and middle school. There is a summer, summer credit recovery program, as well as a summer acceleration program for the high school. And there's a late bus, which we'll be looking forward to talking about when we have our meeting on the 25th.
Okay. So any other questions about the document or accessing the document or just any other general questions? Thank you, Kami, for putting this together. And obviously your, how many, how many school budgets will this be? What's the number?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, wow. Okay, well, thank you.
And again, if anybody wants a hard copy of it, let me know, I can get it out to you.
Okay. All right, so thank you again for presenting that. And I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion about it at our next meeting and with questions in between. So now we can move on to item 14 on the agenda, which is a request for an executive session. I note the time is 10:37, so we're pretty close to, on time. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law, open meeting, chapter 30A, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Is there a second? Okay, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fowler?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
And Mayor Narcoitz?
Yes.
The vote is ten in favor.
Okay, so the motion to move into executive session has been adopted. Just going to let the public know that we are moving into executive session now because to hold this in open session would be detrimental to our bargaining position. Also want to let the public know that we will not return to open session. So we will actually adjourn from executive session. We don't have any other business items on the agenda this evening. So we will make them, we will adjourn directly from executive session. So members of the public, there's no need to wait for us to come out of executive session because we won't be. We'll be adjourning directly.